Welcome to the Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023, meeting of the Stoughton School Committee. This meeting is being recorded by SMAC for future broadcasting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the public hearing for school choice. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Chris, second.
Second.
All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Armando?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion is carried five to zero. Dr. Rob, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. This memo in your packet, I'll just read it out loud. According to amended Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 76, Section 12B, the Stoughton School Committee must vote each year regarding the option to participate in school choice. Just a little bit of background, school choice, if it is approved, would allow students from other towns to attend Stoughton. It is my recommendation, however, to continue as we have done in the past, not to participate in the program for the 23, 24 school year due to lack of space in our facilities. And I think as we've spoken about many times, our enrollment has only grown, and so we wouldn't be able to accommodate students from other towns.
Thank you. At this time, do we go to a public comment?
If there's any.
All right, is there anyone here for a public comment on school choice? All right, hearing none. Can I have a motion on the table to follow the superintendent's recommendation to not participate in school choice for 2023?
So moved.
All right, Chris, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, second. Moved and seconded, I'm going to open it up for questions. Any questions about school choice? Lindsay, Armando, Chris?
Out of curiosity, Dr. Rob, it's my understanding that money would follow the students, so funding is not issue. Right, thank you.
Funding is not the issue, it's just truly the space that's the issue, correct?
It's a little bit of both. So space is certainly the paramount issue, but while funding would follow the student, you only receive the per pupil expenditure. You don't receive exactly what you need, so.
All right, thank you.
Fabian, any questions?
All right.
Any other questions? Any discussion or debate? All right, hearing then, let's move to the vote. So all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, so the motion to not participate in school choice for 2023 is carried five to zero. Thank you. Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
All right, thank you, Chris. Second. All right, thank you, Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion is carried five to zero. This concludes the public hearing on school choice. Those of you who did not get to go to town meeting, get to vote a lot tonight. Public comment? Next item on the agenda, seeing none? All right, let's move on. That takes up the page. All right, the next item on the agenda, item three, is the superintendent update. Dr. Rob?
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. In the interest of time and a jam-packed agenda, I only have two things that I'd like to mention. First, the kill deer's eggs hatched and it went off on its merry way, so everything's fine, and we've taken down the barricades and everything worked out. And on a more serious note, today, the middle school engaged in a lockdown drill, and different from, and if you're a parent, you receive the notification from the principal, but different from other lockdown drills, they tried to make this one a little bit more real. And so we alerted the teachers, we alerted the students, they knew it was happening, but we gave the teachers the opportunity to make some decisions. You know, if there was unfortunately an active shooter in some part of the building, part of our protocol gives the teachers an opportunity to evacuate, to barricade, to do what they feel they need to do, and have the conversation with the students about why. So it was very much a learning moment, and my understanding, Mr. Colantonio is here, but my understanding is it was very successful and well-received by everybody as kind of a next step in our lockdown drills, so.
With those options, did you get any results with regards to which one was more effective?
We have a survey out to the staff right now, so I'd be curious to see the results once we get it.
Any other questions or comments for the superintendent? All right, thank you, Dr. Rob. The next item on our agenda is the Student Advisory Committee Representative. I see that we have Sarah Horner, our Senior Advisory Committee Representative here today. Do you have an update for us, Sarah?
So, yes, so this past Friday, we had our student council lock-in, so that's where like we spent the night at school and with this bunch of activities. But we also had our executive board elections, and so now we have a new executive board, and so next year you will have some new ladies joining you, better unfortunately not Sam and I, but that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Sarah?
I just want to say thank you to you and Sam for coming to these meetings.
Thank you.
It's just a really cool way to be engaged in your community, and we appreciate your perspective.
Yes, the students love that we come too. They feel like they have a voice as well.
It's definitely been impactful, so just want to send some appreciation your way, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Look forward to watching you walk across the stage.
I know, I was going to say, I think the next time we see you is on the stage, so I'm really excited.
Yeah, I think so, I think so.
All right, I guess this is your last time here, is that correct?
I think so, yeah.
All right, okay. Well, thank you again, yes, I'm going to echo Lindsay and thank you and Sam for all of your work and dedication, the rest of the councils that have participated in our discussions, it really is helpful, and we're.
Thank you. I will pass it on to her as well.
All right, thank you. All right, congratulations again, and I guess we'll move on to the next item. Our next item is new business. The first item is the non-resident employee program. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rob again.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. This is another one of those votes that we take every year. The non-resident employee benefit program is an opportunity for our employees, if they want to send their students to the Stoughton Public Schools, they have that opportunity. There is a material fee of $1,500 per student that the employee pays in order to help offset the cost of the additional materials. We've been doing this since 2006, 2007. Attached to your memo is the history of the program. Currently, we have three people enrolled, and it has been well-received over the years. And so my recommendation would be to continue it for grades pre-K to 12, and then 20 through 12th.
All right. Can I have a motion to continue the non-resident employee benefit program?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Chris, a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Lindsay. Any questions about this program?
Comments?
Questions, comments, yes.
Hi, Dr. Rob, I'd just like to say, my husband was looking at something along these lines, we've been considering this because he's a teacher, and it really would have helped us out with daycare options, so I'm really pleased that Stoughton is doing this. I think that helps to elevate us as an employer of choice, so thank you for this.
Any other questions or comments?
I do have a question. Do we have a limit to how many or maximum, how many kids that we can accept to participate?
I think it would be based on enrollment. We haven't been hit with the question, as you can see, over the years. We've had, you know, five, six at most. Prior to the pandemic, we had seven or eight. I think it would really depend on the enrollment, you know, we'd have to be careful with that. But it, to my understanding, and then Mr. Ford may have more information, it hasn't been having issue over the years.
So I can speak to this, because my kids did attend the Stoughton Public Schools. And the school that would have been most convenient for me, driving in to drop my kids off on the way home, was in fact full, so I wasn't able to put my kids in that school, and we actually looked to see where the enrollment was the lowest. So when people are in fact enrolling their kids, if they're in a school where there is high enrollment, there is a conversation there. And if we need to make adjustments, we will. I don't think we have that situation right now with any of our teachers bringing their kids in, but if we needed to, we would, and if the numbers got too big, it's another conversation when we bring it to the committee.
Do we have like a policy or process in place if that were to happen?
We haven't had to at this point.
There is an application, so they do have to fill out an application. So if we found after we received the applications that it was a burden that we couldn't handle, we would bring it back to them.
So it'd be like a waiting list or something like that, first come, first served?
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Lindsay, Armando? All right, and are we ready for a vote? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, I declare that a motion carried five to nothing. So that one's done. And the next item on our agenda is, are the school improvement plans? I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rob to introduce our principals and our other guests to speak, this is one of my favorite parts of the year, so.
Thank you, Ms. Weiss, members of the committee. I'm very pleased to have our principals here and one of our special education administrators, Amy Sareva, to talk about our school improvement program. So over the years, some years we've started with the elementary, some years we've started with the high school, so this year the high school is starting, and we'll go back and forth. So I've asked each principal to keep their remarks to five minutes in the interest of time, because we do have these presentations, as well as a longer presentation later at the beginning of the elementaries.
I won't time it.
So we'll start with Ms. Miller at the high school, I'll have you start the elementaries.
Actually, this is the first time, Dr. Rob, that the high school's gone first for school improvement plans.
Oh, boy.
I just want to note that my pleasure in that, so thank you for having me this evening. It's always a good evening when I get to share all the amazing things that we plan to do at Stoughton High School. But before I do that, I just want to extend the invitation to all of you, I know that they've already come up, I think via email, but some of you are new, and we have a lot of senior events that are coming up, so I hope you will take advantage of those opportunities to come out and see our students. So on Sunday, on June 1st, we have our senior prom, and we'll have a pre-prom event at the high school at around 4:30, 4:30, and so you can come out and see all of the kids dressed up. And then on Sunday, June 4th, at 4 o'clock, we have scholarship night, which is an opportunity for our donors to come and actually hand-deliver the scholarship checks to our students, and many of those are personal donations, so it's a really wonderful evening. And then we have class night on Tuesday at 6:30, and graduation on the 6th, and graduation on the 8th, which of course you sit on the stage, so we will see you then. So please come out and see all the wonderful things that we do, you get to see Sarah again as well. So at the high school this year and next year, we are still on our NEASK plan. Some of you remember that we had our collaborative conference from NEASK in May of last year, and it's a two-year process for us to make sure that we've addressed all the things that we need to address before they visit us again in 2024. Originally, they were supposed to come in May of 2024, they have moved that up to March 2024, and when that starts to get closer, we'll be giving you some information about that, because they will want to speak with some of the school committee, if not all of them. But in line with that, our plan this current year was aligned with the things that we need to work on, and so some of the things you'll see are repeats but extensions of those things. So this year, we were tasked with trying to produce our vision of the graduate profile, which are our core competencies, our beliefs about learning, our learning expectations. So our school improvement plan was to develop that. We have a rough draft of the vision of the graduate core competencies and learning beliefs. We'll be fine-tuning that language to roll out in the fall for people to have some feedback and input on, and then to develop some rubrics, which will be part of this year's school improvement plan. So those two goals this past year and this year are very related, that I think it's the first goal in this year's plan where we are taking and extending the vision of the graduate goal to include our learning expectations in rubrics. This year, we also have a goal of writing our curriculum all in the same format for all of our courses. We had set the goal to be at 90% of our curriculum by the end of this year, we're really close to that 90%. The final tallies are coming in, but for next year, our second goal in our school improvement plan is to be at 100% of our curriculum by the end, actually by February, which is a pretty aggressive, but since we're at the, almost at the 90%, at this point we have about 10% to go, we'll work on the summer over that, as well as in the fall, to get that ready for our visit, our decennial visit in March. And then the third goal we've been working on this year is around corrective feedback, which was again a NEASK recommendation, which we don't have a consistent method across content areas, across grade levels, across the whole school, and so it's a really personal conversation for teachers, because you're starting to get into the house of how they do things. But we've started those conversations, we're trying to establish some common threads. We still haven't decided yet how broad those corrective feedback conversations will go in terms of whether it will be a school-wide choice, or whether we'll stick to, you know, history will give corrective feedback in the same way, and math will give, or whether it will be, algebra one will be the same, and all history, so we're still having those conversations, but that was one of our goals for this year, and we've had those beginnings of those conversations. That goal is again on our school improvement plan for this coming school year, to really firm that up and decide how we will do that, and what, again, these are really important conversations for our teachers. What is the point of feedback? What is the point of revision? Should students be able to retake things? How many times they should be able to retakes them? How does that impact their grades? These are things that are really important for our teachers and our students to be working towards. Our last goal on this year's school improvement plan was not on this past school improvement plan, but it is also NEASK-related, it's also tied to our social-emotional learning, and that is actually listed as goal number three on our school improvement plan this year. This is again a NEASK, it was not on our this year's plan, because we did not get our collaborative conference report until October of this past school year, and we weren't certain at the time we did school improvement plans what this particular area, priority area would look like. So when we got our report, we knew that this was something that we needed to work on, and so this is in our school improvement plan for 2023, 2024, which is about strengthening the lines of communication among all members of the school community for the development, creation, and implementation of social, emotional, and diversity, equity, and inclusion practices and services in the classroom instruction. It's a very broad goal, it's a little bit lofty, but we do need to be able to have these conversations, we need to take a look at all of our programming, from academics, extracurricular advisory, all the things that we have, all the ways that we teach our kids and offer opportunities to our students to make sure that we're including those social-emotional practices, and that we are valuing and including all of our students, the diversity that we have, and making sure our practices are equitable. So those are how we're doing now, and what our school improvement plan will look like next year. Again, very similar to this year's, but that's because it's NEASK-related, and we have until March to finish those up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions or comments on the high school's school improvement plan?
Yes.
Couple of questions, I wrote a lot of notes as I went through this, but I won't ask them all. First one may be a little bit odd.
Okay.
But I was wondering what makes the distinction between extracurricular activity and athletics? I'm particularly interested in knowing about the color guard, which they seem to win a championship every year, but are just extracurricular activity as opposed to categorize as athletics?
Yes, sure. So athletics, we are, the things that fall under our athletic category are also in line with our MIAA regulations, and so sports like field hockey, hockey, they all fall under MIA. Things like color guard, winter guard do not fall under MIAA, so they're separate, and they tend to be more co-curricular or extracurricular, so there's some curriculum pieces like marching band, they learn some skills within the school day to be able to do those things at, in the afternoon, so it's more co-curricular, and then marching band, I mean, winter guard and color guard are just an extracurricular rather than an athletic department.
Good.
But they still require physicals, and they still require some of those pieces.
Very good. The other question I have, which I think is important, is that in communicating to the community, not necessarily the performance of the children or the students, but what do you find is the best way to communicate to the community of parents?
Yeah, that's the million-dollar question, I think, Mr. Baboza. We are trying things all the time to try to figure out what is the method that's going to reach the most parents. We use something called SWIFT-K, which is tied to our student information system, which allows us to send emails, like blanket emails, I'm sure, you know, members in the committee have received those before, so that we can send emails to certain grades, certain kids, the whole school, the whole district, so we use that, and we can also use a text message version of that as well, which allows a certain number of characters. I started a newsletter this year as part of my improvement plan as well. I've tried the newsletter route, that hasn't reached as many families as we would like to. We use Twitter, we use our Facebook, we use Stoughton's, Jeffrey Pickett does a great job getting information out on Facebook and our social media pages. What is the exact best way, I'm not sure, I think some form of all of those, we reach a good majority of our families. Everyone's using something slightly different.
And as the community reaches back to the school, what's, do you, what method it seems to be more effective or most often used?
Most often used, definitely email. My email is pretty flooded. That is the, that is the most popular choice by far. Our phones do work, we love phone calls, but we get a lot of emails, that's typically the way families are communicating back with us.
One more question?
Sure.
Power School, everyone uses it, as far as I know, but actually I've had some people in the community ask if we can perhaps leave Power School and find a piece of software that's better suited to the cell phone. I've been told many parents don't have computers anymore, because they can do everything on the cell phone, but Power School doesn't allow you to get into the area where you can see your child's report unless you go out to a website, and it's been suggested to me that going out to the website can be a complicated and not reliable aspect, so I was wondering if you had any thoughts on whether we're married to Power School, or is there possible, are other methods of, or other software is being looked at that would be more designed for the phone as opposed to designed for the computer and the phone the second time?
Yes, so that's one decision that doesn't rest on my shoulders, but we do have, you know, our technology department is always looking, the reason we use Power School, and the reason I think so many school districts use Power School is because it is the program that does communicate our data to the state in a way that is very easy for us to do, and the state collects a lot of data from us constantly at certain points throughout the school year, and so there's an easy transference of that data with Power School, so a lot of school systems use it. I would agree that there are definitely limitations to Power School, there are things that I think that could probably be done better. I know that our tech department is always looking for things, for example, we just chose a new website platform two years ago, two years ago, and that was based on the very thing that you're asking about, is that, you know, what is a user-friendly format on phones? So the website that we went to is, allows us the phone usage much more easily, it has an actual platform or format, I don't know the tech terms, for your actual iPhone, so that it opens nicely on your phone. So we do keep those things in mind, but Power School, it seems to be the choice right now for the district, and I don't know if Dr. Rob wants to say anything else about that, but.
I would, thank you.
Yeah.
I'd like to, let me talk to our technology department and find out what Power School offers in terms of interface on the phone. I know they do have something, it's not the best, but let me see what they're doing. I know they're always evolving that technology, so let me look into it, and I haven't investigated it, so.
One last question.
Okay.
Am I sounding like Columbo? One last question. And I'll probably ask this question, or everyone could think about it before, is that, and I'm new, so let me know from overstepping my boundaries, what are the three things that you could think of that the school committee can do now that'll help you do whatever, whatever the role is in your, in the school, in the high school?
Yeah, talk about being on the hot seat. Tough night to go first.
Well, I think that's a great question.
The first thing I think you already do, the school committee already does, you support your school system wholeheartedly. I have always felt supported as an administrator in this district by the school committee and by the community, and I think that's, you know, when we see that the town votes for our budget every year, even in times when it's been tough financially, that speaks volumes to the support that you provide to us and the support that the school, that the school community provides to us, the trust that we've built over time. So continuing that relationship is hugely important. I think that if we can continue moving forward in those directions, then any other things that we need will come, and that would be my answer for you tonight.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Any other questions or comments on the high school's school improvement plan?
We have a question.
Chris?
First of all, Ms. Miller, thank you so much for tackling the consistency of feedback for students. I think that will help students better understand where they can correct if it's consistent across areas, and that's a very challenging conversation to have with educators, I completely understand how you provide feedback is very personal, and I think teachers would not want to go to more technical in terms of how to do it, like check the box, so. So I look forward to seeing where that lands. And at some point, I would love to have a conversation with you about Naviance, if we're opening the tech conversation, but I didn't want to do that at this time, just in the interest of time.
Perfect, thank you.
Sarah?
So, Mr. Baboza, just to answer your question, so I feel like a lot of, on the student perspective, personally, I opened Power School on my computer for the first time today in about four years, because I have it on my phone, there is an app on like the App Store that you can use, I know my mom has it downloaded on her phone, and I would say the majority of students and parents do have it on their phones, if they do have a phone that they can use, but I would say that the, like, the app is more used than the website would be at this time, like for students and for other families.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah. Anything else for Ms. Miller?
Just really quickly, thank you for all your work so far, I think 90% consistent curriculum format is like nothing to, you know, like skip over, I think that's really exciting, and as well as Chris's comments about the corrective feedback, I think it's just super important, so I'm excited to see all the focus on these like really impactful areas and what's going to happen in the next year, so thank you.
I would like to thank you and your team for putting this together, because it is a lot of work, and I look forward to seeing next year your report on how well it's gone.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, you're off the hot seat.
Thank you.
As a reminder, we vote on these at the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
Tonight, we're just listening, asking questions, and then at the next meeting we'll have to vote.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Colantonio, for his last school improvement plan.
Weird.
But we'll see you a lot more, so.
Yes. All right, so five minutes, this is a challenge for me, for those of you who've worked for me, so I'm going to do my best. I've tried to take some notes without even flipping the plan over, but I do have to say, this is my last school improvement plan presentation, and I really, this month has been chock-full of things that I'll miss as a building principal for the past 12 years. School Council is definitely one of them. School Council is an amazing, often overlooked, but wonderful site-based collection of parents, guardians, faculty members, community members, you just get a chance to kind of stop once a month and talk about the ways you'd like to improve the school, questions that you have, and people really do come together and they set priorities, so I want to thank this year's school council members, I won't read them by name, because that might take up my whole five minutes, but they are forever famous on the school improvement plan there, and I just want to thank all of them. The connection between this year's school improvement plan and next year's school improvement plan, I think, is really a connection of social-emotional learning, which has been a priority during COVID and since coming out of COVID, not quite out yet, I would say, at the middle school level, probably everywhere, and then the triennial plan for the district. So I think you'll see echoes of both of those things in both years. A very quick recap of this year's plan without even going over each goal, I would say the primary initiative driving this year's school improvement plan was definitely PBIS, a Positive Behavior Incentive System, is what it used to be called, and now it's interventions and supports, but it's the same thing, it's a program that makes clear behavioral and learning expectations for the whole school, and then sets out to promote and reinforce positive behavior in lots of ways. So we did this in many, many ways, we're in the DESE PBIS Academy, we're getting A-plus at the, at the DESE PBIS Academy, I just want to say at OMS, and we've really gone from like school-wide behavioral expectations, recognizing students with Students of the Month, we do student recognition cards once a week, students get prizes for those cards, and we try to kind of catch kids being good and highlight those things, and we're doing a possible spirit day, which is kind of like a field day but cooler in June, and each grade level has to kind of earn the spirit day together as a team with incentives for like lunch behavior and attendance, attendance for MCAS, number of student recognition cards and all that stuff, so that's gone really well. I think it's been actually relatively transformative at OMS, and another goal for this year was to get teachers to go beyond their grade level, to kind of mingle and mix, and maybe even outside their subject area, and I think PBIS has allowed us to do that in long Wednesday meetings, which I call Super Wednesday Deluxe, might be false advertising, but that's what I like to call them. I don't like the word long Wednesday in the contract, makes it sound boring, but anyway. And we tried to add some, we tried to increase family engagement as well, and so we added a tech help night for our back-to-school night, we've added a lot of translators. And so we added a tech help night for our back-to-school night. We've added a lot of translators. And we've added a lot of staff that are bilingual or multilingual, which has been transformative also. And we had one additional parent night this year, but I don't think we added enough. But as you referred to a little earlier, Mr. Barbo, we're always trying to crack the secret code of what is the best method of communication for parents. So that's this year's recap. And now quickly going to next year's plan. So we decided to focus in three areas. And again, continuing with SEL as a priority and then echoing the triennial plan. The student learning goal we want to focus on this year is something called MYCAP. I'm not sure if you've heard of MYCAP, but it stands for My Career and Academic Plan. It's kind of like a thing that's always been around in middle school, but it's kind of been born again and re-packaged. And it's, I think it's nice the way that it's been re-packaged. It relies on Naviance, Ms. Shannon. So it's really a way to get middle schools to actually use Naviance. We've experimented with it, but we don't utilize it too much down at the middle school or a platform like Naviance. But my career in academic plan, it's the career in college readiness standards for the state. OMS has been part of the standard writing group for the Department of Ed since its inception a few years ago. And so this year, what we, we had a team. They went to the department-level trainings, state-level trainings. And they came back with some ideas. And we introduced it to the school council and came up with a goal of having six lessons. 100% of our students, all of our students, every grade level, they're going to have six activities that they do to start to develop their MYCAP profile. And so MYCAP is basically when you're a middle school student, because you're only 11, you don't know who you are or what you like. And what you, who you are and what you like on Monday might be different on Thursday. We all know this at that age. And so my career in academic plan is not about picking a career when you're 11. It's not about that. It's about discovering what your strengths and weaknesses are, what you are drawn to naturally, what you, what you get excited about or don't get excited about. And then thinking, how could those things maybe relate to some classes that you pick in the next grade or a club that you join? And then ultimately, how could they lead to the electives that you choose in ninth grade? And then maybe a college major or a career field. But it's the very beginning stages appropriately for middle school. And so we have an advisory period. We call it nighttime. We do it once a month. And so what we'd like to do is take six MYCAP activities, the age-appropriate ones, developed ones for sixth and seventh and eighth grade, and then have students complete them with their advisory teachers in advisory. So that's the student learning goal. The SEL goal, I think Ms. Sarava will speak to a little bit. But the SEL goal this year is our professional development for teachers. So as triennial plan sets out a priority for teachers to have very comprehensive, research-based, and intense professional development this, next year on SEL, social-emotional learning. So that's our goal for our teachers at OMS as well. And then we added with the help of Dr. Quahle and the EL teachers in my building and my school council, of course. We added a third goal, which you don't always have, but we added a third goal for our English language learners, also echoing the triennial plan. We are finding that, we have a lot of newcomers at OMS, 38 newcomers this year, and they're wonderful. We love our newcomer students. But the expectations for newcomers on making academic progress and getting right into English language competency is a lot. Up to that challenge, it's totally fine. I'm not, I'm not saying it's too much, but with, we have a lot of newcomers at OMS, 38 this year, I think. I think we had more, 38 as of April. So it's certainly more. And so we did a goal to try to have all of our students, no matter where they're at, move up a level on their reader access testing. So if they're testing at a level one, maybe they can move to a level two the following year. And that was a lot, but I think I did it within close to maybe sort of five minutes.
Cat works for me. Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. Colantonio?
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
I noticed Portuguese language is a new one for the school in the curriculum area. I was wondering how that's going as far as enrollment compared to the other languages, French and Spanish.
Yeah. So first year, we offered it this year in seventh grade. And we had about 21 students opt to take Portuguese in seventh grade, which we think is good. The form went out for sixth graders to choose their language. I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. But we're expecting that program to grow.
And that's going to be available at the high school, I guess?
It already is.
It already is.
Yeah, we run 10 sections of Portuguese classes at the high school.
Yeah, that's why we anticipate ours for a month.
Wow.
It would be weird if it didn't face on that. You never know.
I have one more question for you. On...
Page eight.
On the first column in the bottom, create office space for a new EL coordinator at the MS. I was wondering if you have the space, the great space?
We do. Yeah.
Sort of do.
We sort of do. Yeah, we have a little tiny office for this person who will, yeah, we have a space. We don't have a lot of space, but we have space. It's kind of a closet.
And of course, what can we do? What's the three most important things the school committee can do for the next principle of the, of the OMS?
Yeah. I would say you're kind of doing it. So I've been here for 12 years as a building administrator and have never not felt supported by the school committee. And I feel like over the last 10 years at OMS specifically, we've tried a lot of new things and we've done a lot of things and always been supported. The other thing is just, and the questions that you've asked this evening, and I know almost everyone's face from the schools, being in touch with the schools and being in communication, that's always super helpful. So I would say just keep doing what you've always done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Fabian?
Just a comment. I just want to thank you for your services for the last 12 years.
Of course.
I know this is your last performance with us. You'll be helping us on the other end nonetheless. And I like the plan thus far, and I'm really happy about that MYCAP program. I think it's really going to help a lot of the parents and the kids, help them have some self-awareness. So I think that's great.
So I will do the Naviance question to you. So just out of curiosity, I was wondering why you went with Naviance as opposed to the Massachusetts Career Information System?
Yeah.
Because they do have a middle school and a high school portal for that.
Yes.
And the documents will actually stay with the students beyond high school, which I believe is not the case with Naviance.
Right. I would say that we, this is not a super impressive answer, Ms. Shannon, but we went, we went with Naviance because the high school had it. Yes.
Which is, which is what I figured.
We kind of had it already and we weren't using it for a number of years when the high school was using it. So we started to use it. But in the MYCAP world at the middle school level, all of the different platforms are kind of spoken about and sold. I don't mean that in a...
No, and MYCAP is, at least has, Naviance is not very robust in the career preparation area. It's very robust in the college preparation area. And MasCIS is, I find, the opposite. So I don't know that one tool is better than the other. They're better for different reasons. But I love that you're coupling Naviance with MYCAP.
Yeah.
I think that's a perfect blend. So I really appreciate that. The other, I don't know, comment, question, query is just MCAS. That's a struggle. I know you're working with a student population that's extremely diverse. And I thought it was a sign of things to come through the elementary schools. But then when I looked at the elementary school data, it seems like this is a bubble for now. But I was just wondering if any of these initiatives are going to speak to anything that can be done? And maybe you're doing that with English language learners, but, but, you know, to, to work on bringing the sixth-grade MCAS testing, seventh grade, eighth grade in line or more in line, closing that gap with the state average.
Yeah. I would just say that the school improvement plan is a great document. And it kind of sets here's a couple of like priorities that we're working on. Also, there's like 10 other things that we're working on. So yes, and for many years, we had as our student learning goal every year, MCAS. We would pick something in MCAS. Since COVID, we've gone a little bit more like SEL and different student learning goals. But each department has an action plan that they do based on last year's data. So I would say the grade six numbers, and then wherever we are, really ebbs and flows at the middle school with subjects. And some years, we're doing really well in science. Science did pretty well last year.
Yeah, science is awesome.
Science did really well last year. And so each department has an action plan that they do that really looks and feels a lot like a school improvement plan. And it speaks specifically to MCAS on last year's data, to improve last year's data. So those conversations are definitely happening in departments.
I figured. I was just curious. So thank you so much.
Okay.
Lindsay, anything?
Just really quickly, similar to what I said to Ms. Miller, I just really appreciate the work that you all are doing. I think PBIS can be really impactful at the middle school level. Like you said, students are just figuring out who they are and how they want to show up. And that's just such an effective tool. And I think between MYCAP and the social-emotional learning, I think there's just a lot going on to be really proud of. So thank you for doing all of that work for our community.
Very welcome.
Well, I want to thank you as well. This is a lot of work. And thank you to the student council and the rest of your team. And I'm excited to see, I think you're leaving the middle school in great hands and excited to work with you on this side. But I think the middle school's in great shape. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'll let you off. And next?
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. I'd like to invite Amy Sarava to the table. Amy's one of our special education administrators, and she took on a side job two years ago of working on social-emotional learning for the district. And she has really worked hard to implement the first year of our triennial plan with social-emotional learning. And she actually did a pre-year before the triennial plan. And then this year, implementing the first year of the triennial plan specifically around social-emotional learning. And you've heard that the high school and middle school have a focus, the elementary schools have a common social-emotional goal. And so we've made that a district-wide initiative. And I've asked Amy to say a few words just about her work on the triennial plan, setting the stage for that social-emotional learning goal because it's all connected.
Great. Thank you. Welcome. Sorry to have you.
Thank you. So two years ago, we did start looking at some of the needs when the kiddos were coming back out of the pandemic and going into school, moving out of the hybrid version, looking at the SR funding and what supports we could bring in. At that time, we identified the DESI MTS academies. So every building is participating in academy, whether it's SEL or PBIS. We also brought an additional Bright classroom to the high school. The Bright program, it stands for Bridge for Resilient Youth in Transition. It's specific for children who are in hospital settings transitioning back to a school setting. It's kind of giving them a soft landing. That's been really successful at the high school. We have two very strong staff members working in it, and it has helped a tremendous amount of kiddos. The third thing we brought in, or we were looking for, was a way to increase therapeutic supports. So at the time, we went with an organization called Gosnold. And they have a school-based model which allowed us to bring additional social workers into the buildings. And it really is supposed to bridge the gap for students who are unable to access therapy after school for a variety of reasons. We will be maintaining the model. We will be switching to another, we'll be using the Italian home for children. They also have a school-based model. They're just able to better meet our needs as far as securing enough social workers. And they also have different elements of their program that I really, we're really excited about. At the elementary level, they give you one unbillable hour for things like lunch bunch or facilitated structured recesses, things like that, that the elementary principals can utilize. And they're in each building two to three days a week, depending on the need. They bill through the students' insurance, and we just pay a yearly stipend for the program, if that makes sense. So that led us to the triennial plan. Once those things were kind of in place, we started recognizing the need to really focus on social-emotional learning. We wrote a plan with 10 action steps for this year that we've met all of the steps. So the first one was we surveyed the whole district as far as the teachers to really kind of get a better understanding of what they were seeing in the classrooms. And one of the biggest needs people were asking for was an SEL screener. So we utilize Renaissance for a lot of our academic assessments. So staying with Renaissance, we've adopted two of their screeners. The preschool has a separate screener, which is why we have two. It's called ProLadder. It's through the, my EDGs, there's a lot of acronyms in Renaissance. And every time I talk, I'm like, what program is that? And it's the same program. So my EDGs will be using ProLadder, which is a screener that the teachers will complete on every child. Ideally, it should be done three times a year. The first year will likely be done two due to the need for training. The one being utilized K to 12 is called Sabers, and it is via FastBridge, again, under the Renaissance. The next thing that we were able to, then we were looking at how to utilize the data, what would be the best way. So we have also adopted EduClima. That is essentially a platform that we'll pull from Power School. We'll put all of the in-district assessments, such as the STAR 360, NSGRA data and the SEL data, as well as from Power School, we also use for our special education programs and for a lot of our discipline. So it'll basically allow us to kind of create, it's a dashboard for every child. So when the teachers are meeting in their weekly meetings or collaborations, they can really pull up the kiddo and just see all of the information in one place. So that's what EduClima, it'll allow us to kind of, then year two of the triennial plan will be what to do with the data. The action step number five was kind of talking about the SEL curriculum. One of the areas there is, and I don't know the exact code name, but there's definitely been a little bit of a shift in disciplinary actions and additional steps that are taken prior to any type of suspension. Another level is for districts to kind of identify some restorative practices that they have in place. So we just adopted it, and it's really just been rolled out within the past month or so. It's Navigate 360 Behavior Intervention Curriculum. So how it's currently, it has a lot of different options. But how we're currently utilizing it is if a student at the secondary level receives an infraction for violating the student handbook, we can then utilize this program. So instead of the kiddo having an automatic suspension or sitting in ISSS, they have to actually complete work relative to the infraction. So for instance, an example would be if a child was vaping and they were found, rather than the child being kept out or excluded from school, they would be completing work specifically where they are researching the impact vaping is having on their lungs. That's probably the best example I can give for it. We've just begun using it, so it's really going to take a while before me to be able to say how successful it's been. But so far, it's very well received at the secondary level. The other two documents that we created that we will be determining next year, the best way to disseminate, one is, so six out of the 50 states have in their core curriculum SEL frameworks and standards. Massachusetts is not one of them. So what we did, we surveyed all of the six states. Ohio has a really good one for some random reason, just so you know. New York's wasn't that great, and it was California's, but Ohio's was awesome. But we did, using the CASL framework, so the CASL is a social-emotional curriculum. It's like the guru of social-emotional learning. The triennial team participated in a 16-week course on CASL. And then they were able to utilize some of that information to develop our own frameworks for the state, I mean, for the district. So we took the five competencies of CASL and broke down how that would look through development from preschool all the way to 12th grade. There are things such as responsible decision-making, self-awareness, peer connections. Those are all encompassed in CASL. So we did develop a preliminary plan. We have shared it out, not necessarily with the district, but just with other folks who are overseeing the triennial plan. And then I think that's everything. I don't think I left anything out. Next year, one of our big focuses will be looking at how SEL instruction is delivered in the district. At the elementary level, they do have access, or they do utilize Second Step. Many of the teachers have been trained in responsive classroom and zones of regulation. At the secondary level, that is probably going to be one of our focuses as far as how to give direct instruction. That's one of the really founding components of successful SEL learning. So we're going to be focusing on that. We're also going to be looking at the DCAP, the 504 and the building-based support teams, just the already established protocols we have in place and see what areas we may need to improve upon or maintain or no longer follow. I think that's everything. I know it was. I'm sorry.
Lindsay, do you have any questions or comments for Ms. Sarava?
Yeah, that was a lot. And it's all new to me. I was wondering if you've thought about, the schools have thought about measures, two, three years from now, was it effective?
So in year three, that's when we're going to be reviewing. So the triennial plan for the third year is when we're going to be kind of reviewing all of these initiatives. We've purchased most of these things on a one- to two-year basis so that it'll allow for that opportunity for us to kind of go back and see the effectiveness or the lack thereof to determine if we want to continue to go forward with them.
The other question of parents, have you had any feedback from parents and what are their thoughts?
So the SEL screener hasn't rolled out yet. We are that, so the other thing we did was design PD for next year. I forgot that part. So five out of the eight PD sessions are all going to be on SEL. And they're going to be given to us by the Department of Ed. We've worked really closely with the MTSS academies. Um, and one component of that is family participation and family involvement. So that's going to be a pretty heavy focus for next year. As a team, we definitely spoke about different challenges, um, as well as some potential solutions. But we haven't kind of moved forward with any of those initiatives yet.
And communication to parents?
In what regard?
In allowing to be more aware of this program and.
So are you speaking specifically to the SEL screener? So that is something I, we're going to be discussing at the administrative retreat is how, right now, the majority of students all participate in a variety of assessments. At the elementary level, the results are likely shared in parent conferences and things like that. And the SEL screener would be part of that as well. But as far as familiarizing the parents with the questions on the screener, that's something that this summer administratively, we're going to kind of determine the best way to get the information out there. The training for it isn't happening, meaning the teachers being trained in the tool is not happening until October. Um, and then after that is likely when we will be sharing out with the families, the tool and the results and what we want to be able to do with the data.
Will parents get an opportunity or to opt out?
Million-dollar question before I walked in here. By all the principles. Honestly, I think that's going to have to come down to a district um decision that is above me. Right now, like I said, it would likely be administered in the same fashion that the other um curriculum assessments are being administered. It's, the actual SEL screener for grades two to 12 is about a five-to-six-minute screener that the child takes themselves on a computer. K one and two, um, the teachers have to complete it for them and preschool, they can, no, preschool K and one. The teachers are completing that screener on the child.
Last question, this may be a odd one. HIPAA laws?
So, I mean, under school, we fall under FERPA, which is the Federal Education Rights and Privacy Acts, more so than HIPAA. HIPAA is really something that is utilized by the medical community. And if you're not a doctor, you don't subscribe to HIPAA. I absolutely recognize that mental health is a touchy subject. I spend a lot of time telling teachers when I'm trying to drive home the importance of it, that if a child is not available to learn, it doesn't matter how much, how great a teacher you are. So we have to really kind of find the ideology that might be behind a kiddo struggling to learn. But specific to FERPA, um, that's really talking more about confidentiality and records.
Yes.
So as far as opting out of the screener, I think that's a decision that would probably fall on these gentlemen on how they would like to handle that. But I recognize that it, I, in my own school district, it is an option to opt out of different screeners for my own children. So I am aware that 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 can absolutely be a possibility.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions or comments, Lindsay? Okay, Chris.
Hi. I was thrilled to see the layer of SEL across all of the school improvement plans. So obviously, you guys are talking to each other and co-planning and and really doing a concerted effort, which will create a continuum of approaches, which I love. I was really knocked off my seat when I saw the absences at the high school level. Thank you for including that data. And I was going to ask why, but I imagine that that is a layover from the pandemic. Uh, I know re-engagement has been very challenging and even when students do show up, having them show up on a regular basis is still highly problematic. So one of the things that I was wondering, as you continue to work with the staff around PD, if if there are any policy considerations that we should be thinking about as a school committee that would help facilitate the conditions for a more positive SEL environment for our students? I'd love to hear that as as a byproduct of the work that you're doing, maybe, you know, with within a year or so, once, once the staff has a chance to sit down and talk about it.
Sure, I can tell you for the PDs, um, I'm actually pretty excited about them because one of them is called relationship mapping, where the department, the person facilitating it is, for instance, like you would take a child and you have to identify three or four adults in the school that they feel a connection to. And then you go forward from from that.
No one saw that, it's okay.
A couple of the other trainings are implementing SEL in the curriculum and integrating it into advisory, which I think will be really helpful at the secondary level. So I'm hopeful upon the completion of PD. You know, the majority of teachers, I don't really think could probably even tell you the the wheel of the castle at this time, just for for lack of of a PD on it.
Right.
So I am hopeful that by the end of next year, SEL is kind of looked through an equal lens as the other academic areas. Because really, it's at the, it's at the forefront of the child's success. So that is the hope as far, and then hopefully, once we're able to establish that, we can kind of move forward with targeting specific areas such as truancy or attendance needs and things of that, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Sure.
Have you had any questions or comments? Thank you, thank you for that introduction. That's really helpful. It's great to know all the details and any credit. And I look forward to hearing next year how things are going.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss. So continuing on to the elementary schools, as we've mentioned, each of the elementary schools, the first two goals are common. So I've asked Mr. Cancellery to talk about the common first goal for the elementary schools. And then each elementary school has a specific third goal that's specific to the school. So he'll speak to the DAW. And then I've asked Mr. Dora to speak to the second common elementary goal. And then he'll speak to his third South goal. And then we'll move, we'll move from there through each one. And you're still under the five-minute timer.
Yeah, I'm going to move fast. I'm going to move fast. Thank God, there's so many similarities across our plans. Uh, thank you for having me here tonight. I also want to thank my school council for all the advisory and suggestions and brainstorming sessions we had to kind of develop this plan. I first wanted to call attention to the picture on the front of the plan. This is a big celebration. We met our fundraising goal at our yearly fun run. And the reward was roughly 35 to 40 staff members were willing to run through a line of grade-level kids and get colored chalk thrown at them. Uh, we had medical goggles on and it was quite the feat. So this is just a picture of the celebration, something that makes the DAW school really special. So flipping through, two things I just wanted to call attention to that I'm really proud of, specifically for the DAW school, is first, how we performed on last year's MCAS assessment, um, our school accountability percentile, and specifically our student group percentiles as well that I included on page six. Another thing that I'm really proud of for the school that we rolled out this year for the first time and we're looking to solidify, strengthen, and make better is our building-wide staff-to-student mentor program that we do, similar to the relationship mapping that Mrs. Soreva was speaking on. We've noticed a lot of significant changes and a lot of benefits to both the staff and the kids after rolling it out for one complete year. It's been really, really neat. But in the essence of time, I'm going to roll into my task of explaining the shared um goal one. And a lot of the stuff I'm going to speak to is very relatable and similar to what Mrs. Soreva just went over. So goal one, I won't read it verbatim, but essentially it is by May of 2024, all of our elementary school staff will increase their understanding of the current and um most effective social emotional learning initiatives and therefore benefiting a large, large majority of the students as well. We've had a lot of success with the Zones of Regulation program at the elementary level. If you're not aware of what that is, it's a four-color-coded program which allows students, without using verbiage or language, to identify what emotions they're currently feeling. So a student in the lunch line at the DAW school that was in a moment of distress or having difficulty and just was not in the right place to have a conversation about why, could point to a color or name a color. And the staff member that was working with the child would be able to identify what emotions that child is feeling. And then would allow us to make the best next steps. Now, we have not perfected our usage of this program, so more training will be offered to staff, mostly around the area of what are the best next steps based on the reported color that a student is feeling. In addition to that, last year's school improvement plan included four family-community events. The first one we did was dedicated to having a night, an informational night for families about what is the Zones of Regulation. What we noticed was oftentimes, students were coming in uh using morning check-ins to check in on how they were feeling when they got to school, how were they feeling before they left for school? And then they got home to mom or dad, or whoever is at home with them, was having a tough time with their emotions. And they would say, Mom, I'm feeling, I'm in the red zone. And the mom would say, what is the red zone? So um, we had an informational night on that in full transparency. It was, the attendance was okay. So I think if we have another night like that, we would have to figure out a different avenue for promotion to bring more people in. And if we can't, you know, increase the attendance, then somehow make the reproducibles to send home and inform parents in a different way, just so they're aware of what we're utilizing. And then to have a more overt process in educating the kids, not only of the usage of the Zones of Regulation, but why it's so impactful and beneficial to be able to, um, you know, share your emotions and maybe, maybe away without verbalizing it. So that's something we're going to concentrate on. Uh, Mrs. Soreva also spoke about the Sabers screener. We have found that we have concentrated, especially post-pandemic, teaching the whole child. The academics, of course, is, you know, why we're in school every day, but also the social emotional aspect of developing the children here in Stoughton. And we found that collecting data would be essential. A student that you've initiated some of these, the Zones of Regulation, responsive classroom, morning um check-ins, we have live morning announcements, they see the counselor, whatever it may be, to not be able to track them from year to year, are those initiatives having any sort of impact? If they aren't, how do we tweak it and adjust? If they are, we should continue it and allow other students to experience it. So I think the screener is going to be super beneficial for attaching a piece of data to the initiatives that we're rolling out. Lastly, like Mr. Colantonio was speaking about, our EL population of students is increasing. And so how do we also make sure students and their families where English is not their native language are also have access to these social emotional initiatives and therapeutic practices? And we're going to work in tandem with Dr. Quealy in the EL department to potentially include more interpreters at events, to have better translations of certain documents and information that we're sending home to families. And also, not just, you know, it's not just interpretation, it's not just translation, but also to um roll out these initiatives in these events in a culturally competent way. So people feel welcome, so people feel invited, so people feel safe. So that if, even if English is not their primary language, they know that they can come and learn about practices to best support their children. And that's the third piece of that goal that we're doing as a shared goal across all five elementary schools. So the first goal, that was my task. Mr. Dora, I believe from the South, is doing the second goal. And then the third goal at the DAW, so our goals are very, our improvement plans, I'm sorry, are very SEL or social emotional learning-heavy. But I wanted to include something academically related, so we were held accountable. So the third goal is utilizing our district assessment platform, the STAR 360, that we give three times a year with the option of progress monitoring students in between those assessment windows. At the top of the page 10, I included where we are at the most recent winter assessments. We are in the process of rolling out the final assessment of the year that will let me know, let the committee know and let Dr. Rab know if we've met that 70% rating of proficiency. This new testing um platform, the STAR 360, and the access that we have to the data side of things as a building administrator, actually allows us to identify not only proficiency percentages, but also student growth percentages. So I made sure to attach a 70% goal to not only proficiency ratings, but also how are the students growing in comparison to their peers' score at a relatable level. So 70%, and we're there almost in many of the different areas. I broke it down by reading, um, early literacy and mathematics. And to get to that 70%, this year, we rolled out formal data meetings that include curriculum, um, district curriculum. People come down to our buildings to join these meetings, interventionist, grade-level teachers. So we do that four to six times a year. We have PLC meetings. We focus our attention on specific things during our observations of teachers and walkthroughs, progress meetings. We work with Mrs. Montebal that develops after-school and before-school programming to target interventions for particular kids based on the data that we pull from these reports. So I wanted to make sure to include something that was related to the academic side of proficiency to be held accountable when we come back here next year and review these plans. I think I kept it under.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments on the DAW school improvement plan?
Couple of questions.
Of course.
One of the things I was curious about, you have a pre-K and K. And you probably, I don't think you'll probably have this data on the top of your head, but I was wondering if there's a noticeable difference between the kids come, that come from pre-K program to the kindergarten as opposed to kids that don't participate in the pre-K um program before coming to the kindergarten?
So I don't have the data in front of me. I can say next year, it will be my seventh year being the principal of the DAW school, which is crazy to say. But I, I think if you, you know, surveyed any kindergarten teachers, there is a noticeable difference from students that are attending, you know, full preschool and students that do not. Not even for, do they have letter and number recognition and color recognition? But things that we're now noticing post-pandemic, can they sit in a chair? Can they stand in a line? Can they wait their turn? Some of the OT-related stuff, can they hold a pencil the right way? What is their scissor grip like? So some of the non, I'll say, core subject area skills, um, but more of the social skills, that if they're not in line with many times what a full-scale preschool would give to a child prior to entering to kindergarten, we now have to teach those things before we can even access core subject areas. So I would say yes, without the data to support it, I think my colleagues would agree with me, that, you know, attending a preschool prior to the transition to kindergarten has a tremendous, tremendous positive impact on behavior in SEL, which therefore allows them to access the core academics quicker and more effectively.
So I would say probably everyone here would agree, pre-K is very good.
Very, yeah, very important.
Okay, thank you. One more question? On page eight, um, in an effort to ensure that at least 90% of students are supported, I guess my, my question is, why 90%? Is there additional support that the DAW school needs to make a goal of 100%?
I think at the time, in full transparency, uh, we were unsure exactly what the SEL assessment tool would look like. So we were unsure if it was going to be through observations, if the students would be filling out questionnaires on their own, and even how often that assessment was given. And we felt as though, and my colleagues can correct me if I'm wrong, if 100% would have been too lofty without knowing the exact assessment tool. I'm confident now, having worked with Mrs. Soreva, that our, all the DAW school students 100% will receive the appropriate SEL tools, strategies to be successful in school.
And I think you mentioned that the the English learners would, might be, I thought maybe the English learners would that 10, would be that 10% that might be more difficult to reach with the language barriers.
We, and we didn't know at the time, and I'm, I'm sure we still have many questions in in the area of the screener. You know, language proficiency and the ability to access a screener. Potentially, a student on an individual education plan, does that impact their accessibility of the screener? So I think there were just questions that when we were developing the plan, again, there were too many questions to give it the stamp of 100%. We know with what our skill set, 100% of the staff will get it. But not knowing what the actual screener was going to look like.
Thank you.
Make promises.
Thank you.
Lindsay, questions?
Thank you.
Chris, have you? Well, thank you very much.
You so much.
Next.
I'd like to invite Mr. Dora to do the second. We're going to go out of order just a little bit to keep it consistent. Mr. Dora will do the second common goal for the elementary schools and then his third South school.
Good evening. Well, thank you for having me. Similar to my colleagues, I'd like to thank my school council for their collaboration this year. A lot of conversations about what, I think if we could do it, we probably would have 10 or 12 goals on our, our plan every year. And truthfully, we probably do have 10 or 12 goals, just three are, you know, in this actual document itself. So just to highlight a couple of things at the South to start us off, and then I'll get into uh goal number two. And this is my second year at the South School. This is our second year doing, I brought with me, I've been trained in PBIS, so we started a PBIS model last year. It's um mid-revisions in year two. We fully feel like the whole community is on board. I think more than just focusing on the behavior element, it creates a community, which we've really dove deep into what it means to be a shark and attend the South School and, and how you can promote being a shark. And shark is safe, hard-working, accountable, respectful and kind. As you can see on the second page, we have the uh matrix that the um staff at the South School developed. And it's really caught on. So the, you know, if you walk by my school in the front office, you'll see these grade-level buckets filled with pom-poms. So that's every student who has exemplified being a shark in some way or another, received a ticket that cashed in for a pom-pom. And then when your bucket's filled, you get a prize for your grade level. prize for your grade level. So you contribute to that whole piece, and that's really brought our culture along for both students and faculty. And you just hear a lot of like, oh, man, like, you were being really kind right there, and how you're identifying those pieces, which has been amazing. I think in developing a lot of these goals, we talked a lot as a team of principals about like what was really important. And as important as academics were coming out of COVID and over the past two years, the thing that's really bubbled to the surface has been social, emotional learning and are kids available to make those academic achievements, and what can we do to promote that? So in goal number two, what you'll see is by May of 2024, 100% of the students who have participated in social, emotional learning activities and relationship-building practices, thus reducing the number of BBST, which is Building-Based Support Team referrals for social, emotional reasons. So I think the biggest piece is really pushing this idea of social, emotional learning and having a place in the school day. So if you look through the action steps, it identifies, and for each building, this is going to look a little bit differently, depending on the teachers, depending on the supports, but really it's finding a time for morning check-ins and those procedures throughout the day. How are you checking in with students? What routines can you put in place that are consistent? Having a wide menu of options for different types of teachers to choose different types of things. It doesn't have to be consistent at the Wilkins and the Daw and the South, but the time needs to be consistent. You know, finding times for social, emotional learning activities apart from just your school council coming in and doing second step, what are you doing as the classroom teacher? Are you doing, you know, a learning activity? Are you doing some type of journaling? Are you doing some type of circle sharing? Different ways to promote that social, emotional learning. And then as part of this is really getting that tier-one support so that we're able to really surround students with those social, emotional supports on the day-to-day, so that we are addressing some of these, some of these like low-hanging needs that we can address as a whole school, and then cut down on these referrals for, you know, this student is not able to really attend every day in math, or they're having these, you know, they're requiring a substantial amount of support from multiple staff members during the day. What are their needs? How are we supporting them? And cutting down on these referrals to go through this formal process and seeing if these supports can be put in place for all students, and that will cut down on that referral process for social, emotional support. So really, that's the goal. Every school does it slightly differently. You know, Mr. Cancellery was talking about the, his mentoring program, the South School is bringing back Sharks and Minnows, which was a mentoring program for the entire school, where the whole school kind of shuts down and does like a session with all the kids, and it's cross-grade level with different teacher supports. Each of the schools has something different that they do. But in general, it was prioritizing and then having the opportunity for us as a team to be able to come together as principals and see what things are working best, what practices can be transferable from school to school, and, you know, what works alongside our triennial plan that Mrs. Soraya talked about as well. So that's the biggest thing for goal number two. My third goal is, it's so weird, it's very similar to Mr. Cancellery's because we talked about it. We do want to prioritize academics. Mine similarly hits that 70% of students will be proficient as defined by the STAR 360 assessment. That was something really important to my school council, and myself was still maintaining a lot of these resources that the district and the school has poured into academics and making sure that that's in the forefront of something we're continuing to talk about at school council, something that we're talking about as a school, something that we're monitoring the data that comes with that information, and being able to use the interventionists that have been added to the school's staff, the additional specialists that have been added to really dive into, hey, in third grade, we're really going to need a little bit more support in literacy for this upcoming unit. Who is going to be doing that? Does the data support it? And then being able to really move forward with that support and be able to hold ourselves accountable. The one thing that we did talk about that was added this year was it's not just proficiency, it's also the student growth percentile, which I think is a really important thing to be looking at, because we could be getting to 70% of the student growth percentile, but not quite at proficiency. And I still think it's something that for my staff, we want to be able to celebrate. Because if you're getting the student growth percentile, in some ways, to me, that's even more important than proficiency overall, because you're saying that all of those students are getting to that threshold every year. So that's what I got. I definitely stayed under five.
Thank you. All right. Any questions for Mr. Dorr?
Yes. On page six, parent involvement, I see there's a mention of caregivers not having access to the internet, and I'm kind of concerned because we're all going email and internet and Power School and everything else. I was wondering if the other school principals are also concerned that we're going in that direction and we still have parents without internet access? And I'm wondering if anyone has on top of their head know what percentage of the student population's parents or caregivers don't have internet access?
I don't have that percentage. I think I included that as more, and I think we've talked about it, it's just, do they have access to it? Are they using it? Is there other ways that we can go about supporting this communication? I mean, we have a lot, and I think everyone at this point has talked a lot about the different ways that we communicate with families and finding, I think the word was like secret sauce that was used by someone, that, you know, Mr. Colantonio, that sounds like a Mr. Colantonio phrase. But like, just a way really to like, what's working? Is it paper-based? Is it the community backpack? Is it, you know, the text alerts? Is it emails? And honestly, I don't know the answer to that question. I think it's just really always keeping in mind how we're blasting out information and what is important, because truthfully, everything's important if it's coming from us, and we want everyone to have that information. That's why we sent it down in the first place and continuing to just revisit that.
Probably not for you, but for everyone here, any effort at all to try to determine what's really the best way to communicate with parents? Any studies or ad hoc survey of parents indicating how would they like to be communicated? We're at an age where, in my opinion, going out for information, people are not doing with the day of streaming and everything else, parents are also starting to expect the data to come to them, and it's magical, or the secret sauce to just appear in their phone. And I understand parents have to have that drive to go the extra step also, but I think it's probably the school system's priority to make sure that we take that super extra step to get to them. And I was wondering if anyone had any thoughts or ideas about how do we take that extra step, or how can the school committee help?
I was going to say, one of the ways that the teachers communicate with the parents on almost a daily basis is through what we call the Remind app. And at the elementary level, that's crucial in delivering information to the families. It's on their phone, it pops up like a text message, and that is probably the first line of defense, so to speak, for communicating with families, and it's used probably more than any other means of communication that we have. And I also do feel that we put a lot of effort into communicating every Friday with our community, and we do, we do have the information of how many families are accessing the emails and have that. Time's up. And have the ability, like you were asking about the internet, who has internet access and who doesn't. We do have that, we have to report that every year. I don't believe that it's a very large percentage right now. I know in my building, every single parent has email access, so, but that Remind application is probably the number-one way that we communicate, and parents are on it with their teachers all the time. So I'm not sure if that answers your question, but...
It does. Unfortunately, for one reason or another, the Remind app did not work on my phone.
One of the things we did this year was to make sure that everybody was using the Remind app and not using, there was a couple of ClassDojo, a couple of other options, is to have everybody use the Remind app consistently so that people didn't have to download six different apps and have to figure out which one, where, so.
Very good.
Any other questions, comments, or?
One point of clarification. Goal three on page 11, am I safe to assume that you mean by May of 2024, or have you already completed this goal?
Oh, yeah, that would be 2024.
Okay.
That's why you're not voting until next week, so.
Just double-checking.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Dorr. Thank you for all of your work on this.
I'd like to invite Mr. Gulya to talk about the specific goal at the Gibbons.
You get five minutes to rave about the Gibbons, right?
My favorite comment is, brevity is beautiful. I'm Dave Gulya, the proud principal of the Gibbons Elementary School. Good evening, everyone. I do want to thank my school council members, Ken Kalin, who's soon to retire, Jackie Dusette, Mark Struck, Allison Cook, Lauren Spiegel, Christina Camaro, Melissa Crowley, Ann Quinn, and Angela Palmer, one of our health and PE teachers. On the cover is a drone picture of our school with links of a chain linked. So this came from one of our third-grade teachers. It was an idea she had over the summer, that each student would have a chain, a piece of the chain, and then we would all link them, and we had a beautiful fall day, and one of our teacher's husbands, Evan Walsh, took the drone photos, so if you're wondering. And then we took a student from each class and made a circle in the middle, inner circle. As you know, we have common goals for the first two, for our school improvement plans. School improvement planning is a priority of the school council. A lot of my school council members sit on my PTA as well. A lot of our discussions are around our high-needs population at the Gibbons. Our high-needs population has grown at the Gibbons in every school across the district has grown profoundly. So now, close to 60% of the Gibbons School students are deemed as high-needs. A lot of our conversations turn to how can we best support our students? Right now, the district does a great job supporting our students from the moment they walk in. We provide them with breakfast, lunch, after-school programs, vacation programs, summer programs. We do a lot, but we need to do more. And this is where, this is an opportunity to engage my school council and my PTA that wants to do more to help these families. We're certainly thinking about our EL families and our EL PAC with Dr. Quahly and how we can meet the needs of our EL population in the Gibbons district. Portuguese is the language that you're going to hear in the hallway, if not English. It's 90% of the EL students at the Gibbons School speak Portuguese. I know it's different, different parts of the community. We're planning to offer Portuguese as one of our after-school programs to teach our students Portuguese, and their principal, a little bit more Portuguese. But when we're talking about basic needs, the question becomes, what do our families need? And this is what we've learned when we engage our families in conversation. They need school supplies, they need backpacks, they need coats, jackets, gloves, all of these things. Mr. Barbosa asked about internet access, which I thought was a great question. With the pandemic, this was certainly on our minds because we distributed Chromebooks to every family, and everyone was learning virtually, and we know that experience wasn't the same for all of our students. We do have these, they look like hockey pucks, where if a family is, doesn't have internet, we can set that up for them, we can help set that up for them, because it's so important. So much happens on these Chromebooks and with technology. So our goal is really connected to supporting our families, thinking about how we can meet their needs, because we know if we can meet those basic needs, it's going to impact our STAR data, it's going to impact MCAS data. It's all connected. So that's what the Gibbons is going to focus in on as our community engagement, our third goal. We certainly look closely at MCAS data, our STAR data. We have that same goal, 70% of students at or above proficiency, and we're completing our end-of-the-year assessments as we speak, but that data at the Gibbons looks very promising right now. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about the Gibbons School.
Thank you. Any questions, everyone?
Yes, on page nine. I found it interesting that on the first block, PTA can be utilized to assist these families, and I was wondering if you could give me, you just mentioned the puck, other areas in which the school can help the families and, of course, get to the students that way?
Yeah, so it starts with communication, I think, and this is coming up a lot in the meeting today, as I've been listening to the comments and questions. So it starts with families, parents feeling comfortable to communicate to the school. And oftentimes, it's some, it can be through a parent connected, maybe not to the principal or a teacher, but if those lines of communication are open, and hopefully people at the Gibbons know where to find me, I'm outside every morning and afternoon, it starts there with communicating their need. And then we have to be very respectful of their dignity and keep that information confidential. That goes through myself and our counselors. But if, once that communication is there and we have a better understanding if they're having problems with internet access, we also have, there are students that sometimes, there are families that need help linking to a pediatrician. There's all, an array of different questions that we're fielding each day, but they have to feel comfortable first. So something the district has placed a priority on, language capabilities of new staff members coming in, so it's a comprehensive effort.
Yeah, excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Chris?
Of course. So I was thrilled to see the school-specific goal for community engagement events. I think that's a really brilliant way of engaging with the community in a meaningful way and modeling for students what it means to be a strong civic leader, in a sense. So it's, I, there's so much great coming from that. I was wondering, in terms of trying to provide supports to your EL parents, if you've thought about partnering with your ABE services, like the ones that are available in Brockton, to have them come in or to provide a workshop? That's their area of specialty.
That sounds like a wonderful idea. I'd be happy to learn more.
Yeah.
I know that Brockton, there was just an article I was reading in the paper about all the services that Brockton has, their EL parents, that sounds like a wonderful program. And knowing Dr. Quahly and the work that she does with the EL Parent Advisory Council, that's great. I know that parents would be interested in that.
Yeah, yeah. I can connect with you on that.
Absolutely.
Sure.
All right. Ian, Nancy?
Thank you. I'm really excited by this. I know the PTA has done a lot in the school to do things like provide basic toiletries in the bathrooms, and I know that that's been, they've seen a lot of use for that, they're constantly asking for that. And it's a very subtle, but it's such a small thing. My sister's a music teacher in a completely different state, but she notices a difference when students come in and they don't have access to food, they don't have access to clothing, to basic toiletries, she can't teach them music. So I think it is really important to who attend to this needs, and it's very eye-opening to see how much need there is in the community. I think it's, it's kind of sad that we have to do it, but I think because we have this position of trust and that we are in a position to do a lot of good and help these students. So I'm excited to see how this works out. It's a very exciting goal. All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right, you're up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gulya. And now I'd like to invite Ms. Monahan up to talk about the school-specific goal for the Wilkins, and Mrs. Feeney couldn't make it this evening, and so Mrs. Monahan has agreed to step in and talk about the school-specific goal for the Hanson as well.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me. I'm going to start with the Hanson's school improvement plan, and because she's not here, Mrs. Feeney's not here, I am going to try to summarize it as best I can, and then I'm just going to read the goal straight from her report. So I think that will probably be the best way to handle it, and certainly, if you have any questions about her plan, I think I can try to answer them, as can any of my colleagues, after I'm done talking about this a little bit. So from reading through her school improvement plan, it seems to me that a big focus for the Hanson School is helping the students with their accountability. And all educators really work towards this with the students, and part of that is helping the students recognize their own strengths and their own areas of growth academically. And once those students are able to kind of identify the things that they feel really confident in, and the things that they feel that they could still work on, they're able to come up with a goal and then put in steps to achieve that goal, and therefore, they are also then becoming accountable for their success. So her whole third goal is all about that. So I'll just read it for everyone here. So it says, "By the spring of 2024, 100% of our students in grades four and five will identify one strength and one obstacle to their learning. Each student will set a goal and create action steps to improve in the area they feel is an obstacle, to show accountability and ownership of their learning. Students and staff will monitor this goal throughout the spring and complete a final reflection on progress to share prior to the start of the 2024 MCAS season." So I think this is a really solid third goal for their school, and I have every confidence that they'll do a great job with it. I don't know if you have any questions for the Hanson's plan, but I'm sure we can all chip in and...
Page one, I was just wondering how that school's done for space?
I'm sorry, what?
Space?
How her school is in terms of space?
Yeah, there's a typo there, it says 2,865... Yeah, there's a typo there, it says 2,865 students, which I know the Hanson doesn't have that many.
265.
Because I would say we have space for that.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. So now, now, Lindsay?
I just wanted to add a, add a comment. I think this is really, a really great goal, and I would love to see how it feeds into the middle school, because I think it's, you know, as we, as the kids go towards middle school, identifying your own goals in terms of, you know, elementary school, I think will translate into the middle school program, which will then translate into the high school. So I'm excited to see how this works after a few years and these students moving through.
And I love the idea of norming around picking a strength and picking a weakness for everyone, so no one feels singled out, and they are taking accountability for themselves in learning. It's such an important step toward maturity.
Okay. All right, on to the Wilkins. So a few things that we're really proud of at the Wilkins is we've spent a lot of time and focus this year on fostering and building the relationships that, not only that the staff have with the students, but that the students have with each other. And that feeds right into the SEL goals that we had last year, and then will continue to have coming up. We also have morning check-ins that the students complete every single morning on either their iPad or the computer, and teachers are able to gauge how the students feel coming in during the day. That was kind of a precursor before we knew if we were going to have a universal screener for SEL needs, that we tried and implemented this year within our own school. We found a lot of success with that, and it's helped teachers have those conversations, not only with the students, but with the families, based on how those students are reporting that they feel every day. We're obviously very happy with our academic success this year, and we have a lot of different things in place to continue on that same trajectory. And that kind of brings me to the goal that we have for our third goal. Last year, our goal was to be 70% at or above benchmark on the STAR 360 data for the students in our school. And as of our winter benchmark data, we were there for both our reading and our math. We weren't quite there yet for early literacy, but we're hopeful that for the spring, we will be able to be close to, if not at, that 70% for the early literacy. So that's really exciting. And so we thought, taking that one step farther for next year, our goal is to focus more, not so much on the different intervention services that we have in place, but more on that solid tier-one instruction, so that we have less students needing that intervention. And so this goal is all about reducing the amount of students that actually even require that extra support. So for next year, it's a little bit of a lofty goal, but I'm fairly confident we'll be able to attain it, that we'll have 10% or less of our students requiring those intervention services in grades two through five. And those are what we'd call tier-two intervention services. So this isn't special education, this is general education intervention supports that students might need based on where they are. So that's our third goal.
Thank you. Questions, Armando?
This is amazing.
Oh, thank you.
Really amazing.
It's the teachers, so...
You found the secret sauce.
Trying.
I was wondering if you could tell us more about this program or this result and...
So I think, I think a lot of it comes down to the work that we do analyzing the data that we have on the students, and we do that, all of us do that, on a very regular basis. And I think it's always being ready and willing to talk about different ways to reach each, each of the kids. And I think that that's really important, that differentiation and looking at each student as an individual who has different needs, and therefore needs to have a different approach to instruction. We spend a lot of time, all of us have, in trying to figure out the different intervention supports that would be best for the students, especially coming out of the pandemic, who perhaps had gaps in their learning. And we've spent a great deal of time trying to figure out the best way to build back up some of that lack of foundation that they had. But I do, it's a testament to the teachers. I think they spend countless hours thinking about the students and the best way to support them, and, you know, their dedication certainly has paid off.
Is there enough sauce to go around?
I, I think, I think it, I think you'll be very impressed with how all the schools are, are doing. When our spring data comes out, we can see each other's, and it's very impressive. I think that we've all worked really hard, so yes, it's definitely, everyone has a sauce.
Very good.
Lindsay?
No, thank you.
Chris?
Sorry, just a quick question for point of clarification. With the, the third learning goal that you have with the tier-two interventions being no more than 10%, I was just wondering, where are you now?
Right now, we're, we're higher than that. I mean, we're still trying to remediate and, and support students because they're not quite where they should be in terms of that benchmark. And they're needing that smaller group instruction in order to be as successful as they are. And that's why that coaching model that I speak to in my goal is so ultimately important. We are so fortunate to have two literacy specialists, and I have two math specialists in my building, and their primary goal and role in our building next year will be to be pushing into the classrooms and supporting those teachers, and helping those teachers reflect on their instruction and improving their instruction so that they're able to address the needs in the classroom, rather than having to pull the students out in a small group. So I, I feel very confident that we'll be able to reach that, but it will take, you know, it'll take a lot of work, so...
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
I just want to congratulate you guys on the commendable work that you guys are doing in basically identifying that component for the child that's needed. And I think us as individuals, we all have a different way of learning. If you guys will be able to focus on that and actually implement something that works and helps the kids, congrats.
All right, thank you. Thank you for presenting the Hanson and for the Wilkins, and thank you, thank you all for your work and for coming and presenting. I, this is one of my favorite parts, because it's so exciting, it's energizing. I feel like we're doing something productive, and I look forward to seeing the kids' success. So good luck to all of you as you implement this. So will we discuss this, vote on this next week?
Yes.
Okay.
If I could make a suggestion, Mrs. Weiss, in the interest of the project management team, if we could do the donations while they set up their presentation?
Sure.
And then they can do their presentation, and then we'll go back to the agenda after that.
All right, great. So the next item would be the donation to the class of 2023?
Thank you all.
Thank you. Dr. Rob, I'll hand it to you.
Sure, thank you. So parents and guardians of the class of 2023 have completed an outside fundraising event for the class of 2023 and provided donation as a result of that fundraising event in the amount of $9,700. The desire is that the class be able to use this donation for class events like the senior prom scheduled for June 1st, 2023. I respectfully request the donation be considered for school committee approval.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the donation to the class of 2023?
So move.
Thank you, Armando, a second? All right, the motion has been moved and seconded. Thank you, Fabian. Any questions about this donation? Any comments or discussion?
Well done, Deb.
Yes, yeah, I was gonna say, this is fantastic, great news. I'm sure that this is well needed.
There's secrets, Rob.
All right, well seen, then. Let's move on to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Weiss, members of the committee.
Yes, thank you to the parents. All right, the next one is the donation to the SPS drama program.
Thank you. Mr. Stephen Prone, a local citizen, after seeing the Addams Family's spectacular music at Stoughton High School, presented a donation of $1,000 to the Stoughton High School drama program. The funds are to be used to support the Stoughton High School drama program. I respectfully request this donation be considered for school committee approval.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the donation to the drama program? All right, thank you, Chris. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Armando, a second for Armando. Any questions about this? Any comments or discussion?
Oh, just a, thank you.
I know you like the musical a little bit, Armando. How many times did you see it?
I saw it twice.
Yes. Yeah, I also want to say, I, this is wonderful. I, I think this drama program is great. I can't believe it's only been here for a few years. How long has it been?
Two years.
Two years. This is incredible, the amount that they're able to do. One of the things I really love is the inclusiveness of this program, that, you know, they put on such a fantastic program in which the stars shine, but so many other people can participate. I remember my own drama program in high school. If you didn't compliment the two stars in the school, you didn't get in. And so I never appeared on a drama program at the drama stage because I was too tall. I overshadowed the two stars. So I think this is fantastic. I'm really excited to see the community's support of our program, so I recommend voting. If there's no other comments or discussion, let's move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All right, the motion has passed. Thank you very much. And the next item is the budget transfers approval for FY23. Dr. Rob?
Sure. So you have in your packet a transfer request for FY23, and we're requesting to transfer $1,036,926 from the instruction category to the other school services category, primarily to cover the deficit, as we've talked about, in special education transportation. And so we've talked about in the past that we have had additional riders and, this year, and we've had additional expenses. And through a combination of, and we talked about, we haven't filled the paraprofessional positions in first and second grade, as well as unfilled positions, retirements, maternity these, we've been able to save a little bit of money in the instruction category and move that over into the 3,000s. And so I respectfully request approval to make those transfers.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the, the FY23 budget transfers?
Is that moved?
All right, thank you, Chris, a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Armando. The motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions about this transfer request? Any comments, discussion? All right, let's move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 And the motion has been carried, five-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Right before we get to the, should we do the minutes? The minutes is the next item on the...
Sure, we can, sure, they're set up, so I just want to give them time to...
Okay, all right. Any, the next item is the minutes for April 11th, 2023. Does anyone have any amendments or corrections to the April 11th minutes? Are we ready for a vote? All right. Can I have a motion to approve the April 11th regular meeting minutes of the Stoughton School Committee?
So moved.
All right, thank you. Lindsay, a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Fabian. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
All right, thank you. The motion carries for zero with one abstention. And last is the April 25th minutes from the regular school committee meeting. Anybody have any corrections or amendments to the April 25th minutes?
I do.
Chris?
On page five, it says, "Ms. Chris Shannon suggested partnering with organizations like Kitty Academy," at the very top of the page, "to have activities for kids to see if they..." And I wanted to strike the last of that sentence and add instead, "would host a community information forum in partnership with the building committee."
Any other corrections or amendments? Hold it, Nicole.
I'm good.
You're good, okay. You got that.
I've got it written.
I watched the report.
Oh, we should...
Should we table these for, to vote on later, Nicole, or, yeah? Do we need to table these to vote on next time or postpone them till next?
Yeah, we just usually do edits, edits, adjustments, and then they just do...
As amended?
As amended, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of the Stoughton School Committee from April 25th, 2023, as amended?
So moved.
All right, thank you, Chris, a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lindsay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, the motion, the minutes are accepted, five-nothing. And now, moving on to, we have the FY24 budget and articles.
Very simply, we finished town meeting, and the budget passed, and our articles passed as well, so very excited about that.
Yes, celebration. I would like to thank Sam Lafarge for coming to speak on behalf of the Hanson Playground, and Morgan Grope for their, for her comments as well, and to the Hanson Hawks for their support. That was fantastic to see all of them there, and I look forward with Mr. Quigley to going down the slide when it's all built. So moving on to the new, the elementary school building project. So, Dr. Rob, if you'd like to...
A very quick introduction. We're joined by Mr. Tim Bonfati and Carl Francheski, the project management team, along with Chin Lin and Courtney Southwick, who've been very involved in the project, to bring us, looking really forward to the next step. So this is a little different than the last presentation. We're looking to the next steps, what's involved with the project in the next couple of months.
Thank you, and whenever you're ready.
Before we go to the schedule, we just want to call your attention to the June 1st community meeting. It's just another forum to get the word out to folks, yourselves and people who are watching, that there'll be another opportunity to, for the community to hear what's happening and to give feedback.
And just, this is to remind, you, remind you the schedule. We talked about this a lot, the last time we were here. You know, the, after we had our meeting, when we came in front of you the last time, the building committee did elect to extend the date for submission of the PSR to August, so that's what the plan is now. So as you can see, the building committee is going to be dealing with the, the decision around the preferred design option, but the school committee needs to deal with the decision on the, on the consolidation and redistricting issue. So that's what we had tonight, is to begin that. We have another meeting scheduled for you for, I think, June 13th. I think that's still on the calendar. And we'll be looking probably for a meeting in, in some point in July, just to sort of wrap it up. You take your final vote on that, and, and that'll form the basis, what, with the building committee's decision on the option of how, what we submit to the MSBA. So this doesn't, as you can see on this slide, this doesn't affect the ultimate time and deadlines that we had set originally, which is to have a town meeting and a debt exclusion vote in the next town meeting, in the next spring's annual town meeting, and then have the, the ballot initiative scheduled sometime right around that. We're now targeting the Mass School Building Authority Board meeting for, it's not been determined yet, but probably April of 2024. So we are still on schedule, even with that little blip in the, in the submission deadline and extension, the submission deadline. So with that, we can commence. So today, we're going to talk, I think we talked about the kinds of issues we'd bring in front of you the last time we were here. Well, today, we're going to start to delve into them in a little more detail.
So we want to share with you some of the, the factors that we hope you'll consider in thinking about redistricting. The question there is, you know, should Stoughton consider basically going from five elementary schools to four? Some of the factors that, that our team has identified, and, and other communities frankly have identified too, are listed there. It, it's a way to maximize state reimbursement, if you think about it. In other words, the state, the School Building Authority is a partner in this. They, they commit a grant of a significant amount of money. The exact percentage isn't exactly worked out, but it's, you know, approximately half the cost, you might say, is coming from the state. And it is all of our money that went into the sales tax, that's how the MSBA is funded. But having a larger project, the consolidated project, is a way to maximize that. The larger school is just a sort of larger percentage of your inventory of space for the district, and therefore you'll have a larger, more efficient building to operate from an energy point of view, and, and from an operational point of view is another way to think of it. And similarly, then, more elementary school students, a greater percentage of your population, would benefit by being in a new school, if it were larger, is, is a factor to think about. The rebalancing aspect is a little more subtle, but if you think about it, it, it makes sense. If you have a smaller school where there might only be, say, two, two classes per grade, and you get a bubble of population, or, or a smaller, you know, group of, of second graders coming through that year, it's a, you, you have a little less flexibility with only two classes to divide those students among. If you have a larger school with four or five classes per grade, you can have a more finely tuned, and you don't get, you know, larger swings in, in distributing children more finely tuned, and you don't get, you know, larger swings in distributing children in the grades, in the classes. Of course, the point there about ongoing improvements at Dawg, Gibbons, and Hanson are not, you know, directly related to this project in one sense, but we do want to remind the district that things are happening at the other schools too, in terms of improvements there. But there is sort of an indirect way that the other schools, that the entire town benefits by this school project, in that, first of all, there may be freeing up some space at the existing schools by incorporating, you know, certain special ed programs at the new school, is one way the other schools are helped. Just simply redrawing the district lines can better apportion students to those existing schools. The new school can act more as a community center, perhaps than any of your existing schools do. That's an opportunity that, you know, the whole district benefits by reducing the overall cost of the district, operating costs in the long run, but also the facilities cost too. The school committee, a few years back, put together a school master plan that identified the high school was the most needy facility, then, I believe, the middle school was next, then the South Elementary School, oh, I'm sorry, the other way around, the South Elementary School, then the middle school is next, and then Wilkins was the next school, and then there's Hanson. And so, this isn't the end of, you know, facility attention that the town will need to undertake, but by doing a larger project, you do, you can pick off two projects, in essence, and with the state reimbursement, it, in the long run, saves the district money. It is obviously a more expensive project initially, but it's less expensive in the long run. And as we said, yeah, the new school can provide community-wide kind of amenities. It'll have a large gym, it can be an adult gym, as well as a children's gym. It can host summer school programs, it'll have air conditioning, it can have after-school programs, maybe more appropriately housed than other facilities and so forth. So, in terms of maximizing the grant, you know, we said that more grant money, you know, can be applied to the elementary school projects with the larger project. So, this is just sort of elaborating on those points. But the last one too is worth considering. We don't have specific construction costs yet for the options, but we're working on that shortly. But even at a sort of high order of magnitude, we know that, on a square foot basis, the smaller school is more expensive than the larger school. Or if you want to think of it on a per-student basis, the smaller school is more expensive, simply because, you know, the school, the smaller school still has a gym, it still has an art room, it still has a music room. In the larger school, it has those same facilities, spread over more children. So, as you might expect, there's kind of a cost benefit to spread the costs over a larger building. And then, from an operational point of view, clearly, there's the energy efficiency that we've talked about. The district would be operating, you know, for, in a consolidated scenario, four elementary schools, one of which is very energy efficient compared to the existing schools. Educationally, that's the issue about dealing with population bubbles, less disruption. Again, this is thinking longer term. By having one construction project now, you're taking care of two of your elementary schools, in a sense, as opposed to having disruption, you know, happening a few years down the road. And then also, you know, the actual calculation shows that with the larger enrollment consolidated school, about a third, or more than a third, of the students would be attending, you know, a new school. So clearly, we know it still doesn't affect every family or every student, but it is a larger percentage for the larger school. And conversely, if the smaller school were selected, only 14% of elementary school children would be attending. Those are, you know, just to get the information out there for people, you probably know yourselves, but there's ongoing work from safety and energy point of view at the Dawg, happening currently, just getting started this summer, and Gibbons is next, and Hanson's getting a new playground, as you know, and also security upgrades there as well. So, there are ongoing improvements at each of the other schools. And I don't know, Joyce, if you want to talk to this one more specifically, being the facilities person who can...
Thank you.
...talk costs.
So, really, one of the biggest benefits from my standpoint, as I look at the budget, is reducing the cost to operate the buildings. And I just did a really quick little back of envelope analysis of gas costs, natural gas costs, because we are expecting a big natural gas surge in prices next year. It costs 19 cents a square foot to heat the high school. It costs $1.38 a square foot to heat this building. So, when I took a look at 19 cents a square foot, multiplied it over the 90,000 or so square feet of the proposed combined building, and compared it to what it actually cost to heat the South and Wilkins today, the two buildings that would be, there's like a $58,000 a year savings just in natural gas alone. That doesn't mean we're taking the Wilkins out of stock. We know there's things to do there. But there's a lot of opportunities coming up now with grant money to electrify buildings, and we're certainly taking a look at all of our buildings in stock to see the kind of improvements we can make for the long run. Other things that we can save costs on is this travel between schools. All of the schools of the South and Wilkins currently have part-time specialists in some of the positions. They're traveling not in the three minutes between periods, they're taking longer, they're shared. Sometimes they're .8 instead of full-time equivalents. We can cut down on that kind of cost, have full-time dedicated staff to the schools, shared resources, the ability to reduce the cost of multiple resources. You know, you have one library, one learning commons, one STEM center. You're not doubling all of the materials and supplies throughout. And this is all in accordance, as Carl mentioned, to the master plan and how it was laid out many years ago. Actually, that original analysis dated back to 2010, when the first master plan was done.
Okay.
Do you want me to continue on this? Sure.
You could.
Okay. We have tremendous requests and demand for our facilities, especially those that are of a size that they're useful to outside groups, like STOIC. Our Dawg and Gibbons gyms are used extensively, but they're getting tired, and there's an opportunity sometimes to have to resurface floors or repair things, or just to add additional resources for the community. And we're looking at the performance spaces, the cafeterias, the gyms, being really, really vital community sources in a new school building. Our library, our learning commons as they are now, also the core and the heart of the building. Neither the South, nor the Wilkins, nor the Hanson have what we consider adequately sized learning commons to meet the needs of today's makerspace STEM types of programs that are offered inside of a learning commons. And athletic fields. Athletic fields are one of those resources that becomes a town-wide resource. The rec department actually permits our athletic fields on school grounds, and there is always a demand. So, the opportunity to build better, nicer, and things are attractive to the community.
Okay, thanks. So, we also wanted to share with you, what does redistricting entail, kind of, in terms of the process and the considerations, if you were to entertain the consolidated larger school? We do have a consultant on board, Matt Cropper is his name, and he's kind of a national, well-known figure in school placements and districting and so forth. And just to share with you the sort of process that you could go through. And again, you should keep in mind, the decision to go to four schools from five does not mean that you have to make the decision on how to draw the district lines, you know, this summer. It'll take us a couple of years to get a new school in place, and you could really wait till the year before the new school is going to open, to finalize and have more accurate data as to where the families are with children, and draw the district lines at that point. But we want to show you that some of the thinking that goes into it, and some of the variables that you can consider. You don't have to finalize them now, but the map is your current districts, the colored map there, A, and the map on the right, B, is what they refer to as a heat map, because it sort of looks like the thunderstorms on the weather maps, but it's showing the density of student population. So you can see where students live in town. It helps when thinking about, you know, in addition to other factors, obviously, you want to know where students live. So, on a very preliminary basis, we've worked with Matt Cropper to come up with four different redistricting, very preliminary options, to show kind of the variety that's possible, and some of the factors that influence each of them. So, again, the colors are, you know, the four different elementary schools. The green would be the new South Elementary School. The purple is Hanson, the red is Dawg, the yellow is Gibbons. And so you can see there are fairly, you know, significantly different possibilities as to how to divide the town. And among the possibilities that you'll notice immediately, you know, the way it follows certain transportation lines and roads for safety, of course, and in catchment areas, things like that. But the other things that they consider, that you might not realize that you can somewhat control, in looking at the variables, are the utilization of the buildings. As we said, by drawing district lines, you can optimize the enrollment at each school. So no school is oversubscribed, and no school is, you know, undersubscribed. You can even that out. So, that's certainly one. You can look at demographics. The census data is available on families and so forth. And again, the way that they think about it, they suggest that a district think about it, is you might want to look at the townwide average of these certain characteristics, and then see, does each school district, you know, fall within close proximity to those averages, so that there are no outliers. You can look at, you know, English language proficiency as another measurable data, that, again, that no one school is disproportionately represented with that. And you look at the percentage of students impacted. In other words, how many families, how many students would have to move from the school they currently attend to attend a different school, not necessarily the new school, but a different school. And that's another factor, that, again, you can weight these the way you'd like. There's no good or bad, or it's how you want to think about it. So you can see even the four options that we just shared, how they impact the different numbers of students. Option four, 35% of students would have to move from a current school that they go to a new one, whereas the others are up at 41%. So, that's fairly different. It's something to think about. Likewise, those other characteristics are represented with the green, yellow, red colors, where green means that the, that characteristic is falling within the average of the town. Yellow means it's between 10 or 15% varying from the average, and red means it's significantly varying, more than 15%. So, in many of these options, they're all green, which means the districts could be drawn so that they're all kind of similar characteristics, if you want. And I don't think any of them had any red. See, there's the four options and different character, different factors. This one's enrollment and utilization. So, all schools are falling, you might be able to see those numbers there. They're basically within 90% to 100% of capacity, based on the way the current population is distributed. Again, you could wait, you know, till we get closer to opening a new school, to make that decision. Looking at English language proficiency, currently, right now, there is one, the Wilkins, that is a little bit different than the average, but with redistricting, they could all go green. And all, you know, those students, by being redistricted, are kind of evening out the percentages at the four new districts. With student impacts, this one is another one, another piece of information that you could have available to show, if we just start at the upper left, how many students currently at the Dawg, where do they go in the future? You know, 230 of them stay at the Dawg, 122 of them go to the new South School. So, that's just a factor. And you can see, that kind of data can be available for any of these options, if you want to think about that, and see where students are going. And obviously, the community at the time would be interested in how this affects them and so forth. These are just preliminary numbers for these preliminary options, but to give you a feel for the data that's available. Here's that demographic, free and reduced lunch families and students. Right now, again, you can see the Wilkins, the top one is the existing five schools. The Wilkins does fall below the town average in that characteristic, but with redistricting, some of these options, you know, are equally distributed. Some still have a few that are marginally different. And then, one last piece of data, I think we might have shared this with you before, is about, you know, what's happening across the state. The chart on the right there is for, the past four years of all new schools funded by the School Building Authority in Massachusetts. And how large are they? That's the enrollment. These, the grade structures may vary a little bit, but most of them are K to five. There may be some K to fours and some other outliers in there, but they're basically classified as all elementary schools. And, you know, for our consolidated school that we're considering here, the capacity is going to be around 600 or so. The actual design enrollment would be 515. And even though you may think that's large, because we're combining two schools, when you compare it to the data, you see it's actually smaller than the average. So even the combined school is smaller than the statewide average. Again, just a piece of data, doesn't mean it's good or bad, but you can see where the trend is. So, I know that's a lot, and we just want to take this opportunity to, you know, get the, you know, consolidation and the redistricting issue kind of front and center, both on your agenda and obviously in the community too. It is such an important, you know, factor, and it's a decision that we'd like to have made now. We've taken the time to extend the schedule to, say, make this decision this summer, as opposed to having to make it next month in June, extended it by two months to submit to the state in August. So, before we go on to any design issues, just thought if you had questions about all that, the consolidation or redistricting, it might be time to take those now.
Thank you. I just want to make it clear to the public, I know we've stressed this time and time again, but this is all very preliminary. We are not deciding on a district, a redistricting plan tonight. There will be much more community input, much more looking at that. One of the main question before us is, is redistricting possible in a way that makes sense, that, you know, takes into account demographics, takes into account the utilization of the buildings, that no building is overcrowded, no building is completely underused, you know, that our resources are divided in a way that makes sense. And the answer seems to be that yes, not only is it possible, but there are options. And so I think that's the main takeaway for me, looking at this data right now. But I want to open up two questions from the committee. Lindsay?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you very much. This is actually really, really helpful. I think there's sort of two decisions here potentially. It's like whether to redistrict, and then how to redistrict, and I think that this really got it, both of them. So just wanted to say thank you for that. I think I just did not realize how much data was available with which to make a really informed district decision, so just like, appreciate all of those, like, examples there. I was wondering, you all presented like a really thorough case for why we may choose to redistrict. I was wondering if you could touch on maybe some of the counterarguments that you've heard around, like, why it may not be a good idea, or like, what you've heard at community forums, and how you might respond to those? I know that's not what you put the presentation together on, but just like a really brief would be great.
Some of this is available on the website too, where we, the recordings of the community forums were there, and some of the frequently asked questions might get at some of the same issues. But first of all, there's just the human nature of people wanting to stay at the school they currently attend, families wanting their students to stay at the schools that they attend. They've formed an attachment with the staff, and with the ability to walk to school, they may lose that in redistricting, or different people may get to walk to school in the future than currently walk to school now. That's something we've heard. There's a little bit of issue about thinking that they'd lose the small school feel of going to a consolidated school, in essence. People would think it as a double school, because we're combining two schools, but as we show, it's really an average-sized school for today's standards. But we, in the thinking, we would still be maintaining class size. So, that's often a much more important factor than the school size, is class size, in terms of education. So, once we clarify that, some... So, once we clarified that, had some discussion, I think some people's hesitation was addressed with that, knowing that class size could still remain small, and that doesn't double in a larger school. What else did we hear?
Well, I think, well, the other one, obviously depending on the audience and the people that are making the comment, but it's obviously double the cost, so that's, I think, sort of obvious to people, you know. But I will say-
It's not quite double the cost.
Right, it's not quite double the cost. There is some efficiencies, but it's more expensive, you know, significantly, and I think, but people should realize, and we've seen this the last two years, the high school was built, you know, when the high school was built, I think people thought that was very expensive, now that's a bargain in today's construction, and that's not really a trend that's going to be stopping anytime soon, because the nature of construction economics are, costs are just going to continue to grow quite, labor shortages in the industry are structural, the supply chain issues are pretty structural, so I think that's the other argument we hear. I don't know if others have, yeah.
Give Katie the microphone. Can you pass that shit, or take that one?
Yeah, I mean, I think they touched upon some of the different reasons why going to four schools might not be the best option. I think some of the other things that we've considered, and certainly this is not a reason not to do it, but, you know, we spent, I don't know how long, going over our school improvement plans and talking about the social, emotional impacts that the students have, and clearly a large part of that is the relationships that the staff develops with the students. And when you're talking about redistricting, that does kind of shuffle the deck a little bit. And so that is definitely something that is on all of our minds, and how to make sure that everyone's taken care of in a change like that. And again, this is not, certainly I'm not saying this is a reason not to do it, but it is something that I think is important for people to know that we're mindful of, because that will be a change, you know, staff will have to relearn, not only students, but the families, and in all of the schools that would be left if we went to four schools, and that's just something that we're, we think about all the time. So I think the walkability was another common comment that came up quite a bit. People like to be able to walk to their school, and that might not be possible if we, if we, you know, shrink down the number of schools that we have, but again, I certainly think that the pros kind of outweigh some of the cons that have come up.
Yeah, I mean, I think to a point, as we've, something that I think was important you just brought up, that with the school improvement plans being consistent from school to school, I think it also creates an environment where every school your child could go to in Stoughton, we're focusing on a lot of the same things, we're seeing a lot of the same trends, we're putting on a lot of the same, I mean, every school is unique, but the the baseline pieces are in place in all those buildings, and the same issues are popping up that we're addressing in similar ways. So I think for that consistency piece that's there, I think something important that we keep putting people towards is, there's this really wonderful seventy-plus page document that outlines why it's not just well, I think the point is, a lot of people look at the big names of the companies, and like, again, these are all wonderful people, but they're not Stoughton Public School people, even though I spend a lot of time with them now, and so does Katie. You know, they took our plan and turned it into these models. So I think when we hear a lot like, we're going to lose the small school feel, I would actually argue it's still going to exist, there's just going to be more kids, like, that's all about the culture, that's all about the way the building is put together, it's about that neighborhood, I mean, I actually think you might have a more small school feel in this new building than some of the schools do now. So I think there are a lot of benefits, and again, I'm for whatever's in the best interest of kids, but I think that, having spent the time that we did, there was really purposeful things that were put in to make the learning experience better, and if, I mean, I saw thirty-eight percent of students could potentially be impacted by this new building, like, that's a lot of kids to get the things that you want to a lot of students, and so I think that's important.
Thank you all, I really appreciate that. I think that is a fantastic seventy-something page document. It's fantastic. And also just like, I, full transparency, live, if and when I choose to have children, they would be at the Wilkins, except that they may not be, so this is like, you know, close to my heart, close to my neighbor's heart, so I just like really appreciate you all addressing that.
Armando, questions?
Yes, a statement first, I think I think somehow we lose the focus of what we were trying to do. We always end up with the bulk of this presentation is on redistricting and the concerns of the community. We should always have a focus on the concern of the community. But we're talking about building schools and the impact to the children once they're in that school. I think perhaps it's important, redistricting, as Lindsay has said, but I think we need to refocus on we're building schools or potentially building schools, whether two schools or one school. And, and I think our focus should be there, and I think the communication to the community should be on the potential of these schools and the benefits that the children will have. For me, I don't mind if my kids go a little bit further, if they're in a safer and better school. The, as a taxpayer, I'm concerned that it's using my taxes correctly. And I would focus on what Joyce said about the cost savings. I do understand everyone wants to be, have their schools next door to them or down the driveway to them, but that's not always realistic, given population growth and so on. So my opinion, everyone, all of us, and hopefully the community, we can get refocused on the schools and the kids' best best, what do you say, best interest. Obviously, this redistricting does have play in kids' best interest, but I'd ask any parent, would you rather go to a school that may be unsafe for your child? And doesn't have the opportunities, the spaces, the science space and so on? Or would you prefer to go to a brand-new school, which is not only better for your children, but also better for your tax dollars? Definitely refocus if we can back to the structure, the bricks, in order, if I can say that. I'll probably get a lot of comments for that. And the other, a couple of other questions, is this what's going to be presented in June?
Some combination of this, we still have information about the bricks and mortar, about, you know, the potential new spaces that are in a new school, but we do want to get the word out there in the community about redistricting, make sure they're on board.
Oh, definitely, we want to do that, I wouldn't suggest doing, I'm just saying, I think we should focus on that. And I was hoping also, if not here, but in June one, where everyone's going to show up to see this presentation, that we redefine the problem, why we're doing this. I think it's critically important to hammer that home and remind everyone why we have to do this, because a lot of people don't seem to understand why we're doing this. And I think it would go a long way if we, we have no choice, for all the community to understand, we do not have a choice, we need to move forward. And what we're doing is making decisions on where to go. And of course, we hit these forks in the road, and we need the community to help us determine which road we need to go for the school development. The other thing I would say, that I have an engineering background, and I look at this, and I've looked at this, and I've looked at this, and I've looked at this. Dates are great, and the acronyms kind of throw me off, I have to look at those definitions again. And if this presented to the community, I think they'll probably have the same issue. And Dr. Robb and Catherine and I just spoke a little bit of time at the town meeting about potentially formatting the presentation into steps and refocusing all of us, including the community, on where we are now. Of course, we don't know where we could potentially be going, but I think if we format a presentation in steps, we're at step one, I think it would help focus the audience and also all of us to know where we are. And step two will take us to where we're going to go after we've completed step one and made those decisions, we enter step two. I think something like that, usually internal documents would be expressed in phases. So it keeps all the engineers and the managers focused. I think if we do that, we'll be able to bring the community along with us, because they will see the same problems everyone here will see, they will be involved in the same decisions that everyone here has to involve, be involved, and I think it'll be a better way to, in my opinion, to communicate to the community, not only to communicate all of us, if we can always see, this is a problem, and we must resolve it. This is what we've done so far, now we're in step two, or step one. These are the problems we're working on to resolve now, and when we resolve them, it determines what's on step two, and so on. And it gives a focus, a framework in which everyone can concentrate to resolve the problem in the step we are now. And when we've made those decisions or what we do in that particular step, we can then say, we've exited step one from the criteria that allows us to exit step one, and then to step two. And then we have a focus here, again, as opposed to, I see the presentation or what the community is saying, they're talking about this step, and no one's really, in my opinion, really paying attention to where we are. And I think it might be a good thing to refocus, if we can do that. Joyce, your behind-the-envelope calculation, if placed here as only estimates, I think that goes a long way to see or to help our community know why we're choosing or would like to go a certain path. I think that's wonderful to take some of the data from the high school and show the comparison to the current schools.
Thank you.
Chris. A couple of things, so first of all, like Lindsay, I'd like to echo, thank you so much for the data point.
Thank you so much for the data points, extremely helpful data wonk, and that really helped me to kind of delve into a variety of considerations that I think it'll really help inform our discussions going forward, and will also help inform our discussions with the community and address maybe some of those concerns. To Armando's point, I, it may be helpful to remind them that we are actually at step three. You reminded me, I totally forgot, this was part of the master plan, I was the town meeting rep when we voted on it. So that was kind of step one, step two is the high school, and the fact that this is, you know, step three, it's just, is this step three combined with step four or not, you know? So I thought that was a great point. I very much would like to see the reduced construction cost per student. And along with the kind of back-of-envelope things, thinking about, once again, if you were combining the consolidation, you talked about the efficiencies of scale in terms of construction projects, thinking about what that construction cost might look like in a few years down the road, if we looked at redoing the Wilkins. And so I think, once again, to the points that have been made by my fellow committee members before, you know, being good stewards of the community's tax dollars, and showing that that's really one of the things that is driving this as well, is making sure that we have, that created the conditions for a really impactful academic experience for our students. So I think that would be helpful. Something that has not come up, it's just the impact that consolidation may have on busing down the road. That would be super helpful for me, because as a parent, it wouldn't be necessar, you know, walkability would be like, that's going to suck, we have a routine, I'm really used to that, wait, now you want me to pay for busing and how much, and I have three kids? So that can really hit people hard at a time when they may be struggling, especially when you look at the students that will be impacted and the low-income levels there. That's something that I think we're going to need to give consideration to as we go forward. And I'm trying to make this as quick as possible. And I think the last question I had is just simply, it would be helpful for me to know, kind of before and after, what is our capacity, like, what is the max number of students that we could cram into our elementary schools right now? And what would that max capacity be down the road, once again, showing an effective stewardship of tax dollars? That if we do grow for some reason, or we decide to go to school choice, or whatever the future policies look like, that we have that bandwidth, that capacity, so those are all of my points, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could make one point of clarification, just to be clear, our transportation is free for next year. So that was actually one of the things we did, is we eliminated the fee.
Of course, we don't need it anymore, our kids are like, but that's awesome.
But I do appreciate the need to look at routes and figure that out, but it is free.
But, and once again, that's still part of the school budget, so as a school committee member, I'm particularly interested in that information.
And it certainly would affect, you know, would we need more buses?
Right.
More drivers?
Especially when you look at special education and all of that as well, so, thank you.
Thank you. Fabian, questions, comments?
No, I just wanted to reiterate Ms. Shannon's point with regards to speaking on behalf of the community. While I understand Mr. Bobo's points about refocusing and everything, I just think that, like, you know, it's an adjustment for the families, so we do have to make sure that we definitely consider them and have them engaged in a decision. We'll have to move forward nonetheless, however, their buy-in and support for this is going to be crucial, and that's why we prolonged the whole, you know, decision-making and everything, and, you know, just as a parent as well, and from a bilingual community, I know that, you know, we spoke about the attendance and how that's going to affect kids and walkability, so I just think that we definitely need to consider all of that in making a decision, so more work for you, but nonetheless, the community will appreciate it, for sure.
Thank you. I do want to be very clear that my child will be affected by this, so I am interested in the redistricting as a parent and as a school committee member, and it's going to be interesting, I know one of our favorite plans is going to affect me very negatively as a parent. I am definitely going to keep that in mind as we look into presentations, you know, the questions and concerns that I have as a parent whose child may be moved to a different school and that sort of thing, so I'm keeping that in mind. I do want to ask the question of the special education places, I know the redistricting is very preliminary at this point, but I know we, the information that the crapper was working with and how that incorporated the special ed places, and I know that we're sort of looking at, and we are, we're definitely looking at an increase in that population over the next few years, and it's growing almost exponentially along with our ELL population. Do we still have room to kind of push an extra special education place? I know we're already asking for smaller class sizes in the M S C, our MSBA has, but is there any flexibility to kind of try to push in for more special education, considering that we are looking at a growth and we're almost kind of bursting at the seams at some of our schools right now with that? Because I know that sort of fit into, you know, the, as we were looking at the capacity and utilization of some of their schools, current schools, we're saying, well, it does on paper look like we have more space, but actually the specialized classrooms are taking up a significant portion of that. I don't know if you had-
Yeah, we can start there. I think in terms of like general special education and inclusion, I don't think you would necessarily be impacted in terms of classrooms, because we also, in all the designs, there's like spaces for special education teacher, the ELL teacher in each of those communities. So I don't think you're told, you're, I think, yes, we can accommodate, the numbers can continue, can grow, and the plan for the new school would make sense in either version.
And that's also true for our ELE program. We have space designated for servicing those students as well.
Yeah, I think the question that I think you might be getting at is for the specialized programs and like the sub-separate programs.
Right, are we going to have room for that, because looking at having flexibility to potentially move those around, given, you know, an increase in population growth that, in one of those programs?
I think our original, the plan that we were asked to come up with initially was to house the current program that's between the South and the Wilkins schools, which is just at the South, so that's the language-based program. And we presented a plan that would accommodate the language-based program plus at its highest enrollment ever. Which, so we went back, I think we went back fifteen years, ten years?
Right, which then would allow the addition of a room for that, to accommodate that idea. I think we should probably, you know, look carefully at where the sub-separate programs are currently housed and talk about the potential of allevi- are currently housed, and talk about the potential of alleviating the enrollment in those buildings, so that if the program is to stay in that current location, that then we're taking some of the other students out of there potentially. I mean, those conversations that probably should be, we should have, just so that therefore, as that population potentially grows, they're not in the position where they are currently. So I think those are all different things we need to think about. But in terms of the plan for the school as we wrote it, there are spaces that are able to be used that might not be full right away.
Okay.
Yeah, I think when you look at those programs, you look at like the sum of the program's parts, too, in that like, you know, a TLC program or an ALC program is more than just the classrooms that are currently occupied. It's a significant amount of staff that are working with those programs, and it could even include some district staff that are housed in buildings due to different programs. So I think if you are to think about the possibility, like, you could not interchange these programs at their current locations. Like, for example, like the language-based program could go into, for example, another building currently, it's smaller. But vice versa, like the way those are currently enrolled, that would not be a swappable, or, you know, does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, that makes sense.
Can I just add a clarification? This is Chinlan with Vertex. The clarification to what just said is that the special ed program in the new building, whatever the size, will accommodate the population that it's designed for. So therefore, we have the smaller population, obviously, that is only accommodating for that. And in that case, then the Wilkins would not be, there will be no change to that.
Thank you. If I could just provide a point of clarification, too. I think the most important thing in building a new building is to provide the flexibility. So currently, you know, as Mr. Doris said, we're planning for the maximum. So we're planning three substantially separate classrooms and all the different spaces that come along with those. But certainly, as we're designing the building, when we get to that point, we could think about what would be involved in perhaps adding a fourth space, or something like that. But the idea is not to make a decision now about what would necessarily be there, but to provide the most flexibility when it's finally built, and to see where we're at in terms of substantially separate special education programming and what makes the most sense.
That makes sense. Thank you. I'm just concerned and thinking about that. But I think this all points to that there's still discussions to be made about the redistricting, that we can't make that final decision right now. But there are certainly benefits to consolidating the school and being able to provide that space perhaps more easily with a larger school building, and certainly having the support staff on hand, a full-time with a consolidated school would definitely be a benefit. Any other questions or comments?
Just to leave you with, the designs that we're working with are still being considered and evaluated by the building committee. Three of the options you can see are on the line lumber site in different building configurations. The fourth option is addition renovation to the existing school, which has challenges in and of itself. If you were to want to consider the larger consolidated school, it's a very tight site, and doesn't lend itself to the circulation for cars and buses on the site, the additional outdoor space needed, and so forth. So it's really limited to the single school replacement option there, too. But the building committee is evaluating these options right now, and looking more specifically as to, you know, which building configuration best addresses that wonderful education plan, and also works with the site. So just to leave that with you, but that's what we had tonight. Thanks for your patience and.
Thank you very much for your patience in waiting in person. Any more final questions, comments for the building?
Thank you.
Remind the audience again, where the meetings might be.
The next one coming up is at Gibbons on June 1st at 6:00 PM. And then there is another school committee meeting, again, public meeting. And Matt Cropper will be available for that one remotely. But to get into more depth about, you know, some of these issues and what you can consider in a redistricting process. So we wanted to make him available. So that, again, is, I think, broadcast live, your meetings on cable, so available to the community.
Yes. And it'll be recorded for future broadcasting purposes, so people will be able to play it back. We'll put it on the website.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for all the work.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to other matters, a couple of things I want to mention. We all received invitations from Mr. De Rosa, the Stoughton Academy Director, to the 28th commencement of the Stoughton Academy on Thursday, June 15th at 6:00 PM in the Stoughton High School auditorium. I wanted to thank Mr. De Rosa for the invitation. I'm delighted to attend. I hope you all RSVP'd. That was a very exciting ceremony last year, very, very moving. So looking forward to that. The next item is the, the school committee received six emails from eighth graders at OMS as part of their civics project. And we wanted to take some time to thank them for their work, for reaching out to us. I know that sometimes it takes a lot of courage to reach out to adults who are seen very far away. But we wanted to kind of touch on some of the issues that they did, and let them know we have read your letters. The first one we had was about school safety. And we actually have great news. Our town meeting article on school locks that you guys requested did pass. So that's great. So hopefully, those door locks will be all repaired. There was an issue, they mentioned some blinds. I'm going to refer that to.
Thank you very much. That is something we're absolutely aware of. The middle school blinds are inconsistent in terms of how they close and open. And that's something that Mrs. Husany and I have been discussing.
Great, thank you. And they mentioned they wanted more practice of emergency scenario drills. And I think that you guys did that today. So I hope that helps them feel a little less anxious and a little more prepared in the case of emergencies. Hopefully, we never have to use them. The next email we had was about guidance counselors and mental health. And again, I think some of the issues were addressed today as they took up the school improvement plans and talked about what they were doing to that for the upcoming school year. I know that the issue of guidance counselors has come up before. They mentioned the lack of diversity among counselors and mental health support staff. It's just a statewide issue, unfortunately. And we just need to get more people through the system. But I know that we did have, actually, Ms. Sarava mentioned the change from that. And can you touch upon that?
Absolutely. So we're changing to the Italian Home, which is an, it's an organization that will provide more counselors to us next year. And we're really excited about it, because they can provide counselors in each building, and provide counselors to families who may not have access to it. So they'll be right there in the building for the students. And it accesses the student's health insurance, so it works out really, really well.
Great. Yeah, and that was something that we actually asked you to look into, and you found that. So we're excited for that. And we will definitely, you know, keep this in mind as the budget comes through. There's only so much money, but certainly next year we'll make sure that, you know, we'll look at the line item for the guidance counselors and the mental health programs. We did receive three letters about school start times. I know you guys did a lot of great research. There were some great statistics. You polled a lot of people. There's a request for the start time to be pushed back to eight, a couple to 8:30, which is very optimistic. But I know this has been discussed. It's not something that we're actively looking at. There's a lot of logistical challenges. But I wonder if you could speak a little bit to that.
Sure, absolutely. School start time comes up a lot. And I know that there's a lot of studies out there, actually speaking to both sides of the issue. One of the things when we consider it is really the impact K to 12. And so, you know, it's great to say, well, high school students would love to sleep a little bit later, middle school students sleep a little bit later. But what's the impact on our elementary students? And as I've researched it in the past, there's always a big impact, again, on transportation, on trying to make sure transportation works in a situation like that, and also on athletics. Because, you know, right now, this time of year, it's light out pretty late. And so you can start an athletic event at four, five, or six o'clock. You can't do that so much in the fall or in the winter. And so that's one of the other considerations. So it's one of those things that we certainly talk about. But it's a big change district-wide to try to move start times. And so we take that very slowly and carefully.
Yes. So, you know, maybe you guys can find the research and tell us, you know, how we can do, make the transportation work. So if you have an idea, keep looking. Our last letter was about outdoor basketball courts. I did want to mention that I know that the students who wrote in are also talking to the select board. But I did talk to Matt Kushon, the rec department, about the Halloran Park. And so he is looking forward to your questions. He would like to speak to you about that. I know they asked us specifically about the elementary school courts. Could you speak to that, please, about?
Sure. Should we just replace the ones over at the Hanson? So last year, we did have a situation with the Hanson ones had come down. And so we replaced those. I'd have to look into the elementary schools and see what kind of repairs might be necessary. And I can certainly do that research. I'll ask Mrs. Husany to do that research, and really look at the basketball nets and hoops that are up right now and see what might be done.
Great. I think that actually sounds like a great project for the Student Advisory Council. And so I encourage all these students to run for the Student Advisory Council next year. I know you guys elected the board, but I'm sure you're soliciting input. We had the Student Advisory Council was instrumental in the Hanson playground. And so I think these would be great projects for them to visit. So thank you for the letters. This was really, really exciting to see the students. There was a lot of great work. They were very well written. And we want to commend you for your work. And keep reaching out. If you have ideas, join the Student Advisory Council, and we look forward to hearing more from you. Anybody have any other items?
I actually do, if that's okay. I have a very brief update from the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, because it's time for the quarterly update. So for Armando and Chris, I am the Stoughton representative on the board of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, which is one of our special education collaboratives. We are a member district. As I'm speaking, I'm going to invite Dr. Robb to just like jump in if I'm like misspeaking on anything that is just above my head. But just wanted to share, we met on May 4th for our monthly meeting and approved the budget for next year. So that was exciting. Sorry, I apologize for looking at my phone. This is where my notes are. But we also approved like the fee schedule, hourly pay for extended services, the school calendar and the handbook for next year. Services, so this is sort of the thing when we talk about special education on our end, costs are up because of outer district placements. So they are continuing, the Pilgrim Area Collaborative, they're continuing to see services with increased demand, including significant demand for in-home services. They're receiving a lot of referrals. They're trying to be really thoughtful about placement and student needs, especially needs of already enrolled students. Just seeing a lot of increases in mental health needs, particularly for girls and young women, and just continuing to be creative about looking for ways to meet those needs. The big thing about the budget, not to bury the lead, but due to the consistent increase in like tuition income because of the increased enrollment, as well as a significant one-time grant from DESI, PAC was able to freeze tuition rates for next year for member districts. So it's just an exciting way to not just be able to turn back money at the end of the year, but also be able to like, help out member districts in that way. So I don't know if I have a ton more information, but would be happy to reach out to the director of the Pilgrim Area Collaborative to get more information if that's needed, but just wanted to share that. So are there any questions?
That's wonderful news. I hadn't heard about freezing the tuition. So that's fantastic. We're thrilled.
More celebration, yay. Any other? All right. I want to remind everyone that our next regular meeting is June 13th at 7:00 PM. We will be hearing more about redistricting , Hillary Moore, from the building committee. The next new elementary building school project, public forum, once again, is June 1st, 2023, at 6:00 PM at the Gibbons Elementary School. And can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Chris. Seconded. All right, thank you, Lindsay. Let's move into seconded. Roll call vote.
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you all for coming.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all for sitting through this long meeting. A lot of stuff to cover.